Mr. Rill, if you can report.
Um, yes, Mayor, the council is in closed session this evening on several items, public employment, finance director and police chief, public employee performance evaluation, city clerk administrator and interim city manager, and then conference of legal counsel on existing litigation and anticipated litigation, and there's no action to report.
Thank you. All right, go call please.
Vice Mayor Payne.
Here.
Councilmember Schierer.
Here.
Councilmember Campion.
Here.
Councilmember Powers.
Here.
Mayor Cruz.
Here.
You can roll rise for the title player. After which, the five people who will be moving by way of the outside. One, eight.
Audience attention. Color guard attention. Color guard forward march. Prepare to post colors. Please permit me to pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic through its stand, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Color guard, post colors. Color guard perform. Color guard, stand.
All right, can we get the video stuff?
This meeting of the Galt City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. Tonight's meeting will air Friday, January 22 at 9:00 a.m. and Saturday, January 23 at 9:00 a.m. It is being closed captioned and will be webcast at www.satsmetrocable.tv. The city council meeting videos are also archived on the city's website at www.c.i.galt.ca.us. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any library branch.
Do we have any agenda approvals, additions or deletions from council?
None for me.
Moving on to the current questions. This community has a very, very strong feeling towards its commitment with military, and we're very lucky. The city council tonight gives us a give and thank you to our young members returning. They're asking for our please step forward. On behalf of the city council and the community, we want to thank you for your service to our country and wish you the best in your future endeavors. Now, this is what a copy of the, of the actual, I don't know if it looks like, the banner itself is right here, but I wanted to give it to you, because you can ask them to mic that off a little bit. But really, thank you for your service and we're trying to help. Moving on to the comments.
on non-agenda items. Speakers may address council on any agenda item during consideration of the item. Speakers shall restrict their comments to issues that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council and limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Please fill out a speaker sheet located on the table inside the entrances to the council chambers and forward the completed speaker sheet to the clerk.
And one speaker sheet tonight, Gene Downford.
Hi, I'm Gene Downford of Irving City. Um, I want to, tonight I want to address this initially because I reached out to Cal Waste on this issue. Um, the last couple of weeks, we've had people come through the neighborhood and really just rummage through our recyclables and, and, and leave a mess, actually. They, they, he don't even clean up after themselves. They either toss open and leave crap on the ground. And I actually went outside, uh, two weeks ago, where the guy was just, he went, he was down a couple of blocks. I said, a couple of houses, and I said, you know, if you're gonna take our crap, at least pick up after yourself. Now, you'd probably be surprised, you know, my tone of voice, and the guy said, F you. You know, I just, yeah, I said, really? I said, okay. So I, I called the police. And I, it's not whether they took it seriously or not, the fact, you know, they said, well, we'll send a car. Um, at the end of the day, with the mess that they're leaving that we have to pick up, because the guys are gonna get out of their trucks and clean it up, um, they're taking things that we're putting in to help keep our costs down, and, and it's just not, it's not progressive, or it's, it's, it's not, it's not good for us just to stand by and let violence continue to happen. Um, this has been going on for quite a while, actually. Um, we don't, you know, I know you can't go out and police things, but I mean, if, if we're gonna protect what we have, and that is cost to us that we have to bear, and we have a, a company that really goes out of the way to try and make things right for us, I think we need to step up and do something about that, regardless of what it is or what the cost is at this point. Um, I got a meeting next week with, with Dave Accarez, and I'm gonna ask him some questions about overall, overall costs for this, because I really think at the end of the line, the things that he's not getting, especially with cost rising everywhere else, it's gonna come back to us. Um, so I mean, I'm still not really a fan of this water rate thing that you guys are going through now, but the fact of the matter is, anything we can do to keep our costs down, I think we have to address. And pilfering our recyclables that we give back to the city is, is an issue that we need to address. I, I hope you take the time to look into this, and I'm gonna get with Mr. Mr. Accarez and probably come back in a week or two.
Thank you, Gene.
Thanks, Gene. On that subject, so, doesn't the current ordinance prohibit tampering with those containers once they are at the curb side? Does it become the possession of Cal Waste?
Yes, it do. Once they're, once they're on the street, then they are potentially city property.
Okay, so there is a legitimate issue there.
Yes, there is.
To look into.
Right. So we'll have discussions at staff level and see if we can come up with a way to address the problem.
Okay, good. Thank you.
We have the information to defend Congress. Could we have any discussion?
Yep.
Could we motion go through? Motion of the vice chairman, Brandon Second.
Second.
Take the second by Councilman Howard. Talk some more, please.
Vice Mayor Payne.
Aye.
Councilmember Schierer.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Councilmember Powers.
Aye.
Mayor Cruz.
Aye.
With non-stable matters, the chairing and consideration of the Dry Creek Oaks General Plan Amendment, rezoned and tentative subdivision map project.
Good evening, thanks, Mayor. Members of the council, this evening's presentation will begin with our principal planner, Mr. Chris Aris. Chris?
Uh, good evening. As mentioned, my name is Chris Aris, principal planner of the city's community development department, and the item you have before you is the Dry Creek Oaks General Plan Amendment, rezoned and tentative subdivision map project. The project site is located at the southeast corner of the city, east of Highway 99, north of Dry Creek Golf Course, and south of Bosso Road. The site is zone R1A, light industrial, open space with a requested rezon. Uh, the site has a number of components, the largest being the development of the northeast section into 201 single-family homes or lots. The sizes will range from 4,500 square feet to a little bit over 11,000 square feet. It will be restricted for senior use only, and it will include indoor and outdoor recreation center right on the project's east side. The project also includes about 20 acres of open space to be dedicated on the south and east side of the project. And then on the west side of the project site, there's about 13 acres of commercial space, about seven acres of high-density residential, which would, which will also be age-restricted for seniors, and then about eight acres for an assisted living facility. Uh, the project requires an amendment to the 2030 general plan land use map. In order to accommodate the planned development component, the current low-density designation will be changed to a medium-density, and a portion will become open space. The light industrial designation will be changed to a combination of commercial, high-density, residential, and then open space. And the project also includes a rezon, and this will change the R1A designation to open space and Dry Creek Oaks plan development. The plan development is requested because the lot sizes and street widths, or the width of the lots at the street front don't conform to the R2 standards. The R2 standard is a minimum of 5,500 square foot lots and also a minimum of 55 feet at the street front. And as mentioned, the, the developer is requesting a minimum of 4,500 square foot lot sizes, and then also a street, a lot width at the street front of 45 feet. Uh, the light industrial component will be a mix of R4 and commercial. Now, the next component of the project, and really the, the meat of it, is the tentative subdivision map. And as mentioned, you have, oops. One more. Oops. So you have, uh, the tentative subdivision map will include the 200 and single, the 201 single-family units here, the commercial component here, high-density residential, and then also the assisted living facility. This is kind of a concept sketch of the proposed indoor and outdoor rec center. Uh, access to the single-family portion, vehicle access will be at this, at Bosso Road on the northeast side of the project site, and then also at Nicholas Road off of South Carillion, um, right about midway through the project site. And even though there are only two vehicle access points, you still have numerous pedestrian access points to the roads. There's pedestrian access here, also at the vehicle entry points, also at the cul-de-sac down here, and also at the trail entry points onto Bosso and South Carillion.
Chris, where is the golf course?
The golf course is further south down here. This, the golf course is actually separated from the site by another commercial lot, a highway commercial lot, but I believe this component right here is actually the driving range. So it does, the project does touch a portion of the golf course. In fact, because it's so close to the golf course, the street names are proposed to be all the golfer names, to help identify the project with the golf course. Uh, the project does not include any parkland dedication, so it will be required to pay in lieu fees or quinby fees, and I'll talk more about that a little bit. Uh, the tentative subdivision map actually contains a bunch of standard conditions. Most of the conditions will apply to all maps that come forward to the city, but this als, this project also has some that are unique to it. Some of those include the high-density sites and the planned development site are conditioned for senior use only. Uh, the southern high-density site is conditioned to be developed as an assisted living facility, and all senior housing must be built as accessible using universal design concepts. We also condition the project so that the community center is constructed prior to issuance of the 26 building permit.
I want to ask you something about that. On the senior housing, is this from up the form where, uh, even though it's for active, a part of it's for active seniors, um, what about conditions for, like, on the bathrooms, safety rails, or standing rails? Is that also gonna be a requirement for this touching?
Well, that, that's the plan, for, at, at least to put in a portion of the, the single-family component, and if they are not there, at least the backing is there, so they wouldn't have to do massive upgrades if they were to put those type items in. The applicant is here, and he can talk more about what he plans to do, but in discussion with him, he, he seemed pretty proactive in addressing some of those. Because you're right, even though it is an active center, uh, it still needs to consider that.
Wasn't that referenced in the staff report or in one of the conditions of approval?
It was in the conditions of approval. So this is, and that's basically what I'm saying here, is that they have a condition to include all, I, all units as a separate, using those universal design concepts, but that could be, at a minimum, just making sure that the backing is there. So I think it is a good question to ask. Uh, I also provided an errata street, two, an errata to the conditions of approval prior to the council meeting, and that's condition C1, um, and that was amended, amending, removing the language pertaining to, uh, the quinby. Uh, we did prepare a sequel initial study and a mitigated negative declaration, and it was completed for the project. It was circulated for public review, uh, on September 2nd through October 1st of 2015. We received comments from the air quality district, the Gulf Joint Union Elementary School District, the state water board of Lock Sacramento. A full discussion of the issues they presented is discussed in the staff report under the sequel section. And the project was presented to the planning commission in November 2015, and it was continued to the December meeting. The applicant first submitted subdivisions showing the planned development component as not a private development and with public streets, so it was not gated. Shortly before the meeting, he submitted a revised map showing it as, or showing the streets gated with a couple minor revisions. This didn't give staff adequate time in reviewing the revision, so it was continued to the next meeting. At this meeting, the planning commission also had concerns about the project architecture that was presented at that time. Based on those concerns, when the project came back to the planning commission in December, the applicant removed the architectural package, uh, and that is not a part of the entitlement request at this time. When they do select an architectural package, they will have to come back to the planning commission at a notice of public hearing for approval. And the applicant is taking more time to create a better project for the subdivision. The planning commission also had concerns regarding the Class 1 bike trail. Right now, as you can see, oops. The Class 1 bicycle recreation trail runs right along Dry Creek Road on its east side and follows this road. It's a 10-foot path, uh, that's, um, you know, basically a requirement from the city. The planning commission had concerns that this is remaining open to the public at Bosso and then also open to the public down here at South Carillion. They felt it defeated the purpose of the private roads that they were, that are being proposed, where you have a gate here limiting vehicle access into Dry Creek Road and then also here at Nicholas. So they proposed, or thought of, options to help secure the trail from the subdivision, and those included fencing, putting a fence between the trail and the open space. They also suggested perhaps moving the open space further east onto, uh, this open space over in this area, creating more of a buffer. They talked about placing the trail along South Carillion and Bosso, and they even discussed gating the, uh, trail heads at Bosso and South Carillion. Uh, this is a developer preference to keep the trail here, and staff supports that. What staff doesn't support is closing the trail to the public. This is really viewed as a public amenity, and once the city builds, the Class 1 trail will really connect parks, schools, it will connect, uh, Dry Creek to Dead Man's Gulch and really be a nice community benefit. So staff is open to providing some sort of fencing or moving it further on the open space, but not closing it to the public. And the applicant has decided to keep the trail as it, as it, as you see.
Can I just say one thing? Um, if it's a senior gated community and it's only gated on three sides, then in my opinion, it's not a gated community.
And that, that opinion is shared by the planning commission. Uh, when the project was first submitted, there were no gates anywhere. The whole project was open, and staff supported that. From our perspective, you know, a senior community, it can be open, it doesn't, there's no requirement making it gated, so it was really a developer preference. But based on concerns, the applicant was hearing from the planning commission, they decided to revise it to at least provide the gates here for vehicle access in here, but there are no pedestrian gates, uh, proposed with it. But your concern, again, is shared by the planning commission as well.
Chris, when it becomes a gated, I mean, it's a gated community, there's aren't public streets, and then they have to be maintained by the homeowners association, correct?
Correct.
They're not maintained by the city. What buffers up next to that open space? What is the next lot?
This right here?
Or, yeah, out there?
Well, this, this piece here is part of, well, actually, it is a, some sort of a care home. Uh, I don't know what, what care they do there, but there is a care home there. Further south, on the other side of it, there's another, um, I think it's a single-family home here, and I believe the land down here is all part of the solar plant that was put in next door, so, and this lot here, further to the east, was a big solar plant, uh, that is part of the county.
Thanks.
So the planning commission also had concerns about the park requirement for the project and the development impact fees that the project will pay. So the first thing I'll talk about is, are the impact fees, and the planning commissioners, based on feedback they were getting, had concern that perhaps the impact fees are a little high for the subdivision. All development pays impact fees, and you can see this graph is taken from our impact fee statement, and all development, not in the northeast area, pays fees based on this chart. So a single-family home will pay this $11,612 per dwelling unit, and then retail and office have their own calculation that we made. And as you can see here, uh, there is no age-restricted category for traffic. There is for fire protection service. Other cities do have a separate fee category, especially as it pertains to traffic, for senior use. In fact, that's why we have it here for CSD Fire, is they were instructed by the city of El Grove, which has a separate fee category for senior use, uh, through all their categories, and so CSD just carried that forward and basically gave it to us. So we do have that separate category for age-restricted units for fire protection service, but not traffic circulation. And if you see down here, this is the Measure A fee that basically all cities in Sacramento County charge development, and it has a separate category for, uh, senior use. So a senior single-family residential will pay a different fee than a standard single-family residential. And it's becoming almost common practice that everybody is aware that seniors typically just have a lower impact on traffic than, uh, a standard single-family home, therefore should pay a reduced impact fee. And so that was discussed at the planning commission. Uh, the next item we talked about was the, or is the park requirement for the project. The city of Galt has a requirement of five acres per 1,000 residents for each subdivision. If they do not dedicate parkland, for example, if they're, they have an area that's not designated to include a park, they will then pay an in, an in lieu fee or a quinby fee. The Dry Creek Oaks requirement is 4.8 acres, and this is based on 301 units multiplied by this figure right here, which is 3.24 units, or 3.24 average persons per dwelling unit. And the planning commission felt that this didn't accurately reflect the average number of persons in a typical senior home or even a high-density home. The city, prior to the recent code update, this graph over here shows the fee cat, or the categories we had for, uh, for basing our quinby fee requirement. As you can see, there were different categories that staff can use to calculate more correctly a, the persons, uh, living in a specific subdivision. So this was, this is not in the recent code. We have to use the 3.24 persons per household for all units in the subdivision. So the planning commission asked that the city council consider this item and directs staff where appropriate.
Look, this is what we discussed back in July when we adopted the Development Code, pointing out that by eliminating all of these different categories, it would be unfair at some point to assess, you know, 3.2, 2.4 persons on a senior project when you've only got two people living in the house, so it made no sense. So I'm glad to see that the commission recommended this be brought up, because it needs to be corrected.
And so the thought is, rather than doing this on a specific project-by-project basis, that the code should be amended to clean it up for all seniors, and the same with the senior traffic fee impact.
I agree.
That we should explore for all senior projects, not just this one, so it is not just project-specific.
Very nice.
And that concludes staff presentation. The city council has asked tonight to take action on the sequel resolution, and also the resolution that approves the general plan amendment and the tentative subdivision map, as well as taking action on the ordinance approving the rezon, and then also provide direction to staff on the impact fee issue and quinby issue. And once again, that concludes our presentation. Rainey Planning and Management prepared the secret document for the project. Rod Stinson is here to help answer any questions you have along with staff, and I believe the applicant is here as well.
Questions from council?
Uh, do you show a map of that division park? Is it close?
I think we've done again.
So how close is that to, um, is that close to Dr.?
Uh, no.
What's the beginning of that?
Water.
I know.
I mean, I didn't mean that, I meant storm.
Dry Creek runs a little bit further south of the project site, and...
Dry Creek runs on a, um, kind of a, from what would be the northeast down to the southwest on a diagonal, roughly parallel to, uh, Dry Creek Road. Uh, what drains into the detention basin is a majority of the single-family, uh, project, the commercial, the middle high-density residential, the southerly high-density residential, and a small portion of the southerly, um, single-family residential has a separate outfall to Dry Creek.
Everybody in the household over the age of 55, or one person in the household over the age of 55?
Uh, you know, we did define that, um, and we, we're doing that conditions of approval. We did further define that, uh, there with me one moment. So in the conditions of approval, we did further, it's at page 4A18. So the way we define, the way we define that is intended and operating for occupancy by persons 55 years of age or older. So the way we would read that is, is that people living in the home, whether it be rented or bought, purchased, would be 55 years or older.
Everyone in the household.
Correct.
And no children in the household.
No, correct. Well, the, uh, the project is conditioned to have a, um, home search, a homeowners association, and the homeowners association rules should further define some of those issues, and we have not received drafts of those yet put. The way we read that definition is, is that, yeah, it's, we've done it for people 55 years or older. I don't know if, I mean, staff wouldn't be in a position to policing that to ensure no children were there.
I don't think so.
It would be the HOA looking at yourself.
I mean, that's where the issue comes up about saying it's an age-restricted, you know, uh, community, and so they shouldn't take quinby, or there should be reduced rates, and, you know, and the elementary school concerns, you know, the staff... the, you know, and the elementary school concerns, you know, the staff address. I guess my concern is, is that there is no way to enforce not having someone, not having children in households.
Well, other than for us making sure that the homeowners association has that language in their document and then has some sort of encouragement policy in it, which you are correct, staff would not be going in and making sure that...
Yeah, 'cause I, I mean, my understanding is a senior mobile home park, you know, has that same issue. I mean, there's children living there with their grandparents and, you know, adult children living with grandparents, and there's no enforcement.
But I think, like at New Hope, there is enforcement there, so it's gotta be with the rules that come down with the homeowners association. But children aren't allowed in that one.
Chris, I was wondering about the lighting along that path. Will there be, uh, is there street lighting in there?
Well, Dry Creek is proposed to have street lighting, so that would provide lighting on the trail.
All along the path?
Yeah, along the, the path that goes along Dry Creek Road. So, right here, you can see that it just, it borders right along Dry Creek Road, and Dry Creek Road will have, will have street lighting. The only place it separates is then when the trail jogs behind, homes, I believe, one through eight.
Why does that not feel that you want to close off that path? Is it, what you, what you share that along with it?
Yeah, it's, this, um, this path is really seen as a community benefit, and again, once the city builds out, it's intended that this Class 1 trail basically is interconnected. And so, in that interconnection, you would be able to presumably get from Dry Creek to Dead Man's Gulch to trails without ever having to get on a Class 2 or any other trail. And then, again, that it's just a community benefit, not just a specific development. If you started gating these off and not allowing access to the general public, you just would not have that interconnectivity. And, you know, these trails along these open spaces have been proven to be, you know, an asset to communities. I mean, there are other cities, I mean, the best one you can use as an example is really the, you know, Sacramento's along the river. I mean, this wouldn't be as glorious, but, you know, it can be very beneficial to Gulf residents once the city builds up.
But we know, problems, no offense, in Sacramento has a long, uh, river. I mean, we wouldn't get it to that excess, but there could be some problems arising from...
Well, and there have been. There, there have been problems with some homes that back up to the river where they, these homes had gated off those trails. And then it was actually a big public fight for the city to actually engage these homeowners and then open up that trail to the general public, so you can move from one side to the other unimpeded.
But it could be a gated community, and there could be access for the public, but it could be gated for the seniors, correct?
It depends on where you put the fence.
That's what I'm saying.
Correct. So, in this scenario, if you were to run a fence between the subdivision and, and the trail, then yes, you would then have that security for the subdivision and the residents.
And public access.
And public access. The only downside to that is, you know, residents in the subdivision, you know, would maybe funnel to gates, and maybe that's an issue, I don't know, but you wouldn't want to limit access to the trail from, for residents from the subdivision. But staff is not opposed to that scenario, uh, the applicant has been. So, for us, that's been developer preference. We don't see Gulf as kind of like a high-crime area, and this wasn't identified to be a problem when it was open. So, for us, there is no requirement for the gate, for that to gated. Again, it's developer preference.
And if the, if there were, if it was gated, would the same thing apply as applies to the public streets? Would this now be, have to be maintained by the homeowners association?
That's correct.
And be responsible for it, which really increases your homeowners association fees for seniors. I mean, when you start having them have to pay for all of the upkeep of roads, all of the upkeeps of that path, the lighting on that path, the security of that path, I mean, I think you start putting some restrictions off that the homeowners association...
So, they wouldn't pay for the lighting or security of the path, 'cause the path is public.
Well, no, not if it's gated off.
Well, we meant to gate on the inside.
I was saying, it's the gates, it's the gates to the inside of the path, and the path is in the public domain, not part of the subdivision.
What the planning commission was recommending was it be gated at Bosso and be restricted from anybody, from the public, having access to that path. That's what the planning commission recommended.
Well, that was one of the scenarios. There were a couple of different things talked about. The other was, as Curtis and Mary were talking about, where there was a fence separating the subdivision.
Right.
From the trail. So, they felt that would then provide the security to the residents in the subdivision.
I think that also takes away from the, the view and the aesthetics and...
So, and that's...
And then being able to use the path. I mean, it's like when you go to some of the other subdivisions that have the path running along them, I mean, going through that.
They have gates, they give the people inside keys to the gates on a lot, a lot of those, that's how they run. They have the fence along the inside, and anybody from the gated community that wants to use that, there's gates there for them to, they have public, they have access to it.
You mean, gate from their backyard or gate from the street?
Yeah, a few gates, not every backyard, but just a few gates, like along the, yeah, like, thank you, up there and there, yeah, that's kinda how they do it.
What they're talking about, um, I'm all for the idea of, you know, I'm building, we're totally agree with what you brought up. You're talking about 10 cents care homes sitting there, okay? And you're talking about senior students. I don't know how many of you constantly are asked by these people coming out of there, and I just, a senior development for seniors enjoying their lives, not to be developed with, like, an interaction consequence.
Or even bicycle riders that are going by too fast, and, you know, I, I think seniors are entitled to gated community, and I'm with you, that's what most of them want. I don't think they wanted a free-sighted one with a, I, you know, but we've all got our opinions, we'll see what, which way the vote goes, you know?
So, what you're saying about if it's gated off at Bosso, then it's gonna be maintained by the...
Right, but what they're, what they're suggesting is, this is, that's Bosso, but the gate is then separated from the subdivision, or fence. So, it's still open at Bosso, but, you know, it's still separated from the subdivision by a road owner, a fence running along. The east side of Dry Creek and the west side of the trail, basically providing security on them.
So, like, if there's any, if there's anything, so...
Well, at that point, the fence would be the, the homeowners association and be under, it's, they would maintain that fence.
Wait, 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 do you need these or open the public hearing or, or something? Or is the council done with their discussion, I guess, at this point, I would ask? Okay.
It seems like there's a number of questions, I'd say, I just need to kind of weigh in a little bit. Um, the same discussions that you guys are concerned about, so the planning commission was concerned about, too, and how you deal with this, this public bicycle trail that planning loves, the planning wants, wants a trail. So, we try to, we try to incorporate that, we'd rather not have it, have it there, but they're pretty out of...
But it's a require, it's a requirement of the general plan. It's not, it's not, it's not, it's part of the park plan.
Yeah.
It, it's not, they didn't, didn't make it up.
Yeah, and so, we, we can, we can live with it. So, we're trying to work, work around it, but our proposal is, you know, we, we put some barricades, you can't ride, you know, it's not vehicle accessible, but you can drive a bike, or you can walk through it. And then you'd sign it, we're saying it's a public trail, adjacent areas are private, please say it's a public, public trail. I think you can make that work. Actually, we've got a project similar to this in the foothills, we've got public golf course, a golf cart pass that, that works pretty well, it hasn't been a problem within a private gated community. What you're trying to do in a gated community, you're trying to restrict vehicle access, and that's what gives us the real security. And so, I think this is very workable, or it's not workable, but you can't put a fence there anyway. But what, that open area is gonna be an amenity to all the people that live in that subdivision, and they want to be able to walk out there, or walk their dog out there, or play with their grandkids, or do whatever. They don't want to run into kids with a fence.
Well, who's gonna maintain that? Because truthfully, it's mostly weeds right now. Who's gonna want to run with their kids or their dogs through the weeds in that, come on?
The HOA does that. You know, and, and HOA, these, these type of communities can have a very active, involved HOA, they can have very strict CCNRs, and they work, you know, and they're maintained at a very nice standard. I guess I've got experience with them, that, that they do work, you know, and, and the HOA will maintain those areas. It's not gonna be maintained as a park, but it might be mowed a couple times a year, and it'll be, you know, maintained to some degree, so... I guess, to sum it up, I, I think a public trail to a private project is workable. To the south, it is all vegetated, so somewhat secure. To the east, you know, there's a, you know, there's a solar park. I know you're concerned about the, um, the care center, but that's one of the reasons we put that detention pond up on the north, 'cause that detention pond becomes a buffer between the care center and the subdivision. It's a, that's the logic. It'd be a little simpler, better from a, well, have it down further to the south, but it's there for, as a buffer.
Any questions, council?
I make one other comment. I'm just, I'm just asking about accessibility. We have designed these plans, and the plans are all designed as accessible plans, which means you, you build them all with 210 doors minimum, 210 or 304 doors, around zero thresholds, you know, you block for all the grab bars and so forth. So, they're all set up so they can easily be converted to, um, you know, fully accessible houses. You don't move them to ADA status, that you do them to an accessibility standard criteria that you try to meet, so that, that's the way these plans are all designed. Plans are about 90% designed, we're still working on some of the elevation details, and that's the only reason they haven't, um, been to the planning commission yet.
And what do you do with the size of homes?
We're trying to do smaller, you know, if you want to be a nice project, but you don't want to be a real pricey project. So, we're starting as low as, it's got 1150 to a 2200 square foot.
Is it a game of, like, single level?
All single level. It, because again, it's, it's gotta be accessible, you can't, you know, really, you can't have two-story homes that are accessible.
I'd be doing that because in another senior project, uh, the builder didn't do that, and so, if people got older and they wanted to have the safety, well, it was a small, it's a, it's installed without flipping the wall, without really extending. So, just to be using a vacuum there would be...
I think this, this whole game, this whole concept of senior accessible design and senior housing is, is just evolved. They just, we know we're doing more than a year, 10 years ago, 20 years ago.
Especially if you continue to do a plan that has assisted weddings, car pride, and your nice tradition, and I love that that's what's called for the golf course, I think it's been for the golf course as well as for people that couldn't hear it.
And I agree, I think it's gonna be a good project.
Do you look at having an option to have those bars and things installed, and actually have them put in the home in itself?
Well, you, you do all the things as, as, as an option. You know, some of the people, when they're 55, I'm 55, and I don't walk to my house yet, you know?
As somebody who's had bilateral knee replacements at age 50, I needed them. So, I can just tell, there, there are, you know, and, and just depending on what age group, I mean, with you, I was just thinking that it would be nice if the option was there to have them there for those people that are seeking for that kind of...
You offer those type of things, you know, roll in showers and those kind of things as options, you install the grab bars as an option, you do, but, but you don't do it in every home. You make it so that people can change the home without changing any doors or moving any walls or anything, it's all, it's all framed that way. But you don't, you don't make them all fully handicapped, it's just...
Thank you, Chris. And we're, you currently have an open call with three women as far as the, the hearing portion, if anybody's willing to come, come up and speak to us, Dr. Chance.
Hey, I just have a question about, um, that retention pond being so close to the care home. What kind of, the facilities are gonna be for the people? And, and you made a comment about the people getting harassed. I think that's overblowing it a little bit. I think you're just taking, I think you're taking advantage of a situation, I think you need to back that up. And secondly, what about seniors that have special needs children, that are adults, that aren't 55? Like, my wife and I couldn't go, and we had kids. We couldn't go into that community because of that restriction, and I think that's wrong.
Well, no, that's why I was asking, what is, what is the requirement? I mean, it's a...
Well, you, you alluded to the, the trailer park, the grandparents with, with their grandkids. You know, I mean, that's apples and oranges, I think. I mean, you're talking about two different, um, um, projects, I did two different, completely different scenarios. So, um, I just, I might give you a little more open-minded of that. And I don't know, now, this is just me asking, Chris, but seriously, what about moving a fence two feet in and building it all the way out with just access from the community out?
Well, I, I think that's one of the proposals that he's actually talking about.
I just think that's...
Is putting that fence in a similar manner.
But that retention pond, I think, needs to be addressed. I think if you have an open retention pond, I mean, you're just asking for issues.
I think it's, I was watching the report, it doesn't have water, it's a recreation area.
Correct, it's, it's moderately sloped, so it's not some big, that would be a burden for somebody. It actually can be used for passive recreation opportunities during non-wet season.
Is that like, like the one that's out at the, uh, school?
Yeah, correct. And we, we recently, another example, um, the Emerald Park subdivision that was just approved, uh, up along East Stockton Boulevard, has a very similar type thing that is open, you know, all year round and can be used for passive recreation and is not fenced from the homes.
And, and the other thing, I'm just gonna say to Gene about the homeowners, we'll, we'll look at that when it comes back, correct? Or, no?
Well, the homes will go to the planning commission for...
Okay, but the thing is, you know, a lot of, there are, uh, uh, to every rule, there's exceptions, but a lot of seniors, most seniors don't want to move into a senior complex if there's children all in it, you know? So, I mean, come on, that's why they move there. But, um, the planning commission, I'm sure, will deal with the exceptions to the rules when the, the rules come out.
I have a question for city attorney, uh, not the city manager. Under the, under the housing laws that deal with the age-restricted properties, aren't there a multitude of regulations that can be imposed? I mean, there's 55, I know there's 55 and, and only, and 55, at least one has to be at age 55, and then you have opportunities for grandchildren to stay for no longer than 30 days or two weeks. I mean, isn't there a number of different options?
Yeah, um, yes, there are, and a lot of it's regulated by the HOA rules, as Chris indicated, but, uh, and I know that there's usually restrictions relating to having grandkids stay over and how many days per year, but the other issue that we haven't really touched on is spouses or domestic partners, and I believe that if, uh, if one member is 55 or older and they are married or have a partner that is younger than 55, that as a matter of law, they are allowed to have that person occupy the residence.
The public trail will be closed. Thank you for the discretion, council.
I need to make a motion.
Okay, I'm not surprised.
Do you think we can alter the government, have each one?
I'd like to have some discussion, if that's okay? Yeah, just, not, not part of the opening. Well, what I'm trying to figure out is, we have three, at least a couple of policy issues here to deal with, um, which I don't think are part of the actual recommendation. The first one would be dealing with the park impact fee. I think as part of this project, to the extent that we need to make changes, um, I believe I'd like to see staff instructed to go back and amend the ordinance, the subdivision ordinance, or what was the subdivision ordinance, um, dealing with persons per household, and look at establishing a criteria or a separate category dealing with age-restricted developments, because it does, we know that they're age 55 or thereabouts, and you are only gonna have at max, uh, two persons per household, oftentimes one. So, we know that the standard of 3.24 persons per household is out of line. It's wrong. We're overcharging. So, I think that's number one, uh, number one is a policy I'd like to see addressed, and I think it's fair to the developer, too, because he's overpaying in, in fees. Secondly, with regard to the, uh, traffic fees, I, I don't know, I know that the IT handbook, uh, transportation handbook probably has standards, and I would, I guess I would like, uh, ask council to have, you know, staff consult that document as well as others, and look at, arriving at a reasonable, um, charge on senior projects, because there are fewer trips. They don't generate 10 trips like the normal, single-family residential. So, I think that our fees need to be adjusted in that area.
Most of them probably just have one car. Most of them probably just have one car.
Is there one that can make that happen and still have this approved tonight?
Yes, because they're actually separate items. You know, as it relates to the Quimby fee, that is an ordinance that is on your books. If council gives a direction to modify that ordinance, we will revise it and bring that ordinance back at a later point in time. Even if you approve this project this evening, we will have that ordinance back to you for consideration before they're at the building permit stage. So the applicant will not be penalized by having approval tonight before that ordinance is revised. As it relates to the impact fees, it is a little bit more of a complicated process, because one of the items that we always have to be concerned about with impact fees is you just can't, you have projects that are going to be built by your impact fees. You have an expense that's generated, and you divide it up in a fair manner. And to the extent that you reduce one type of development, you can't shift that burden to other developments. So what I would anticipate we would do, as it relates to the traffic impact fees, is that we would look to do a supplemental report to the NEXUS report that was prepared for that fee and then bring the NEXUS, the supplemental report back to the council for consideration to build in the senior housing components and then adjust the other categories accordingly.
So, and we're all getting to the recommendation. Have you been to the other items that you helped with Campean's proposal? Do you think that's a way to come?
So what I would recommend, since Councilman Campean has put forward both of those issues, direct step to amend the subdivision ordinance to modify the multiplier for senior projects on Quimby fees and to examine the traffic impact fees as it relates to senior projects, it would be appropriate to just maybe take a motion on that item right now, get it off the table as far as provide staff direction, and then we can move back to the project for action.
I did have, I did have one real quick question I want to ask. Well, you've got the putting green and the horseshoe pits and all that. That's private for the senior complex, correct? So you have a public bike path going right next to it?
That's part of the subdivision.
Well, that's what I was trying to say. So we got the, we have public and private, and we've got private, public going right through private. So.
One of the alternatives, one of the alternatives was to swing that trail on the east side of the recreation center.
I think.
Is that a big deal to do that?
Not from staff's perspective, we're okay with that.
Okay, because the builder, yeah. I'm basically going to leave the path the way it is.
I'm just waiting for a second.
It's just the traffic impact fee.
Traffic and.
And then the Quimby fee.
And Quimby fee.
I'd like more discussion. I think we make the assumption that in a senior household, there's only going to be one or two people. I, and I have a concern that we start changing the average number per people per household for seniors and then does put the burden on other households, because when we come up with that, when they came up with that average and did the study, they were taking into effect households that only had one or two people as compared to households that had six or eight or ten people. And, I mean, we want to make this assumption that senior households are only going to have one or two people. You know, I have a wonderful aunt who has, you know, her and four other senior ladies all live together. I mean, in a home, I mean, in a residence together. I mean, you make this assumption that it's always going to only be one or two people in the household. And I'm not against reducing the fees, but I think we, we need to stop assuming that households only, senior households only have one or two people.
Maybe there's some, maybe there is some survey or whatever that could say how that normally goes. I mean, there's not that many big houses in that complex, so.
And I do think seniors use parks, and they use our libraries, and they use all of these things. I mean, their swimming pools, all of the things that those parks use pay into.
But you also have to look on the flip side. Every single-family house, which is the vast majority in the community, you know, talking over six, seven thousand units, it's assumed to have three point two four. Well, I guarantee you, you've got a lot of seniors that don't live in a senior project, and there's one or two people per household. So it's an imprecise science in how you're going to arrive at paying for these public facilities. And I don't know that on seniors, based on the number of senior projects we've had, that there would be a significant variation in what these fees are going to be. How would it, how would it adjust over the next twenty years? Because that's, that's really what we're talking about. They take the long-term, they take the general plan buildup, they plug in the numbers, they make some assumptions, and then you come out with a fee.
Well, and this kind of just goes back to what I always think, but, you know, I had a single parent that lived in one here in town, and I don't think there was any more than one or two in any apartment in that complex, and I visited a lot of times.
Yeah, but those are the apartment kind of, these are single-family homes. These are two hundred single-family residences. I mean.
But age restricted.
At age, well.
Not huge.
As age restricted us, I guess.
Sure.
I mean, we don't know what the homeowner association rules are going to say, right? I mean, I think that.
I think we'll, we'll have an idea at the Planning Commission.
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Payne, Councilmember Hewer.
Aye.
Councilmember Campean.
Aye.
Councilmember Power.
Aye.
Mayor Cruz.
So that's just, I mean, this is staff direction. So we'll bring the recommendation back, and then there's an opportunity for further discussion at that point in time. No, no, you can go back to those now.
I still ask, yeah. Do you still have questions?
I don't have questions, but.
I did have at least one question on the, it talks about, this is the staff, on page nine of the conditions of approval. I think it's B twenty. It has right-of-way of twenty-six feet on South Carillion Boulevard. Is that, is that a half, half section or is that a full section? Because right-of-way, twenty-six feet.
Page nine, conditioned under B twenty.
Exhibit C. Excuse me a second, I'm going to look at the map, which, excuse me, includes a cross-section of South Carillion.
I think it's.
The reason why the right-of-way and the curb line are the same as South Carillion, the sidewalks are within a landscape and pedestrian access easement.
Well, I don't have a good cross-section. I guess is why I ask questions, I don't know. What does the cross-section look like for South Carillion? I mean, is there a median raised in the center of the road?
That is correct. That should actually be fifty-two feet.
Instead of twenty-six?
Well, I think the condition is properly worded. It says that for the streets listed below, dedication of Atticar right-of-way to provide the distance from the street center line to the property line. So that's a half width.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Twenty-six, half width equals fifty-two feet total width.
So we're looking at a hundred and twelve-foot right-of-way on Bosso?
In total, which includes the north side. That's not part of this development, but.
Correct.
When that area does come in, they'll be required to dedicate additional right-of-way to equal that thoroughfare standard.
I didn't read it that way, but I see what you're saying now, so that would be. I think the question that I have deals with the placement of the path. And I look at, I look at the Stafford report on page, what is this, thirteen or sixteen? And it lists several different options. But I think, number one, I think that the trail, it's a continuation of the same trail that is on the other side of ninety-nine in the Creekside subdivision, and it's planned to continue southward. Ultimately, this will connect all the way up to Dead Man's Gulch in the northeast area. So I think there's little question that it needs to be provided in continuation and consistent with the Parks Master Plan. The question becomes is where do you put the trail? And I agree with Mary Lou. Where it's placed now, it cuts right through the middle of what is private property. And it's, and it's a public, it's a public asset, and it's a public property. So it needs to be moved eastward. Now, the next question becomes how far eastward do you want to, do you want to have it? Does the council prefer to see it immediately adjacent to the street? Or would you like it further east and provide some separation between the street right-of-way and the trail? Understanding that the, that the developer may not be, this may not be his preferred method, I think we have to look at, you know, this is going to be a public facility for future Galt residents, so I think we need to take the opportunity to look at, what's best for the city in this, in this case? And, you know, what works for this develop? I mean, not going all one way, but I think the way it's designed now, I don't think it would work at all.
Well, most of the walkways, most of the public walkways have at least some buffer between the street and the walkway and the community. I mean, when I go out and walk them, some smaller than others, but some, they all seem to have some, they aren't right up against the street. They seem, not like a sidewalk. They, there seems to be some nature area or natural kind of area between, or landscaped area between the walkway and the. But I think it needs to go around that rec.
On the outside, to the east of it.
Me, too.
What was the Planning Commission's final thinking on that? What did they say? Well, I know there were a bunch of soft things discussed, but what was the?
Well, they, they proposed a couple of different options that were talked about tonight and also in the staff report, but they just wanted the city council to consider those and weigh in on those options. So again, they just wanted to make sure that the private nature of the subdivision was protected.
Yeah. So if you've got a public path going through the private nature of the development, then it's not really protecting the private nature of the development, correct?
Staff is not opposed to relocating the trail eastwards.
I mean, Chris, I mean, are we right in thinking that the path is right up against the roadway? Oh, I think it needs a buffer between the roadway.
There are other subdivisions that have that. It is kind of a mixed bag with our ten-foot trail. I mean, if you look at some of the Creekside developments, it runs right along the street. And then there will be some, actually, I think a subdivision that's going to come to you next is going to have a trail that's right along the street, too. So there are some that have portions of it along the street, and it's, again, just a mixed bag.
Yeah, I mean, Creekside has a portion, but lots of it's going through a nature area. And there's a take-up between the back of the houses and the walkway.
Well, for what it's worth, there is a three-foot separation.
Oh, okay, there is a three-foot separation. Well, no, I mean, that's, that's three foot. So would it be a landscape, so three-foot landscape separation?
Most likely, we like the two-foot decomposed granite on each side to have.
Oh, so it'll be. What, two feet of? So there's actually, would be like five feet. Three feet landscape, two feet decomposed gravel, the ten-foot pathway. A five feet between this and the fence line.
My personal opinion, my opinion is it needs to go around.
Yeah, I agree, around the.
Around.
We have to work with that intent.
If you want to, if you want to act on the project tonight, yes.
The commercial developments, Chris, I mean, we don't, I mean, because it's a rezone from light and death trail to commercial, which I understand, commercial's more, more in line with the resident, if we make this a residential area. But there's no stipulation on what kind of commercial development would be, correct?
There is not, true.
It could be any sort of commercial development.
Well, that's appropriate for that zone designation, so it really depends on what's appropriate for that zone. I mean, staff sees that as kind of neighborhood serving commercial.
I know, that's what you said in the report, but, okay.
I'll track a little bit on this, on the trail. You know, perhaps, like I said, Jeff said, we've got to come back to Planning Commission. I'd like to get the project approved, but perhaps we could approve it with, you know, subject to future approval of the trail location. It's just hard for us to sit here tonight and figure out really the best way, place to put it. I prefer to have it just as it's shown on the map for different reasons, but if it makes everybody feel more comfortable, we could come back to Planning Commission or we come back for architectural approval on the plans and also come up with proposals on location of the trail. So that'd be, if we could act on everything else except this one item on the trail, that may be preferred rather than do something rash tonight that may or may not work.
Well, I think our concern, I mean, my concern is we've got that recreational, your recreational, and that you've got the pathway running right through it, and it seems to be it should be around the outside of that.
You see, in my mind, that's all right here. That's where the twelve-ounce can be displayed, but the entire green area can be utilized at some capacity. So bisecting that with a trail, to me, is not really appropriate. It'd be better to keep it adjacent to the street. You also have to remember that private streets are very low-traffic streets. It's not like it's going to be an hazardous area for the, for the bikes. But either we can, if you can approve it as shown, or if you're not comfortable with it, then we can come up later with another proposal, and do that one element.
I guess I'm, I feel very strongly that the path needs to go on the outside of the recreational area. How far outside, I don't know, but it doesn't work in this, in this process. I mean, you, you know, there's been talk of a fence, and no one's talked about a fence. And, you know, I'm not saying I'm in favor of it to separate the trail from the private development, but I think that. Yeah, that's.
Yeah, this whole thing right here. Around this side.
To me, that's more intrusive to the public, to the private clubhouse than it would be as it's shown.
Because we would have cars going across the pathway. And I know we have some cars, we have some pathways to do cross-three. This one, we're creating.
Where everybody's going in and out to go to.
This is where all the parking spaces are. I don't know. It makes sense to me that the pathway way would go on outside of the recreation area.
Do you have any thoughts on the path? I would like to put a legitimate concern that the path would be crossing where the parking lot, cars went in and out of parking lot. Do you have any reason why you wouldn't want to take that into consideration and have the path go around? I want to make a list right now, but I think that would be a good point. If you didn't have traffic, more of the paths there that could do this.
You'll have some, I just don't think you have that much traffic. I don't think it becomes a huge issue. And I think the way it's located right now, that's, this would give the greatest likelihood of being used. You stick up, again, you've got no connection on either side, and maybe fifty years or thirty years or a long time before you have any connection. So if you make a remote on segment of that trail that doesn't connect to anything, that's not visible, it's way off the road, it's not going to be used, and it's just, it's more apt to be used the way it is right now. more apt to be used the way it is right now.
And have you built with the four, that house is completely...
Well, what'll happen, you know, a lot of the things you're concerned about, it's governed by DRE, and, you know, the DRE is going to require that you bond for all the future, you know, HOA assessments and everything else to make sure that's viable association. And you've got to also bond for, any common area facility that you represent, you've got to either build or bond for. So it'll all happen, there's a condition in there that requires if we build at a certain point, but the practical purposes you build it to start, it's not coming right out of the gate, because you want that amenity there to help sell homes. And if you're not building it, you're bonding for it, you're putting the money for it, so...
I just think you should, you understand how to, if you go to the building there, that's going to come out, because you don't get away with it, and meantime, the path, you don't know...
Well, man, it will be built. We anticipate driving that clubhouse with the model homes, we'll try to build.
Yeah, that's, yeah. Well, I'm just going to stick my foot out there then. I think it should go around.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a recommendation. You've got, you know, you've got three items before you, and part of the project's coming back anyway because you have a rezone. So one approach would be you could just first take the resolution relating to the environmental document, which is the first one, and get that out of the way. You could introduce the ordinance relating to the rezone, so that would be introduced, and it would come back to you at the next meeting. And then the last part is you could entertain a motion to direct that the map be amended however you want it. So basically, say, move to direct that the map be revised as follows. If that motion passes, then the revised map will come back to you for approval at the same time that the rezone comes back. So that might be a way to kind of move it, move it forward.
I would make a motion, then, to approve the initial study mitigated NACDEC. That would be number one. Number two, introduce the ordinance approving the rezone. Number three, adopt the resolution for the proposed amendment to the general plan, and approving the tentative subdivision map with the trail going to the east side of the recreational area, and further that the issue of fencing be discussed at the planning commission level when the housing elevations are brought back. That would be my motion.
What's the second?
Would you say that issue of fencing, are we talking about...
The fencing between the path, a fence, and then the development? Because that's been battered around up here, and it was battered around at the planning commission level as well. And I think that they would be the appropriate deciding authority on that issue as it relates to the subdivision map.
Do you want the board to come back for more discussion?
No, when it goes back to the planning commission with the housing elevations to resolve that issue.
And then you will come back to the conference?
Unless it's on appeal.
Mr. Mayor, motion for a second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote.
Vice Mayor Payne. Councilmember Hewer.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Councilmember Powers.
Aye.
Mayor Cruz.
Aye. Do we know if the public hearing or adoption of proposed water is...
Yes, give us just a moment to get our PowerPoint up. Okay, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, this next item is also a public hearing item, and it's regarding proposed water rate adoption. And this is the fourth meeting that your council has had an opportunity to hear portions of or provide guidance to staff to bring us to this point. And at this point, we're ready to, obviously, we've sent out notices to the public, and we'll have a brief presentation prior to recommending to open the public hearing on the proposed rates. And we would certainly entertain any questions the council or the public may have as part of that process. At this point, like Mark, introduce the topic, and then he'll introduce our consultant.
Mayor, council. See, this has been a long journey. It started about three and a half years ago when we decided to go through meters, to start installing meters, which was a Monday morning quarterbacking was a genius decision. Because it helps with water conservation, but it also helps with drought issues. And so as we started this three and a half years ago, we thought that we would have to do something to our rates. We had a rate structure at that time. Eighty-four percent of our rate structure was based on fixed fees coming into the city, and only about sixteen percent based on variable. Our current, our existing water rates were ten percent fixed and about ninety percent variable. But we looked at that over the last couple of years, and, you know, we were concerned a little bit, but as we come up last year, we started, you know, figuring out that water conservation, it was, has been pushed now for over eighteen months. The drought that hit us pretty hard this last summer, even though we're talking, you know, we're starting to grow algae on the sides of our homes right now. It may be over, it may not be, we don't know long term. But we decided, you know, direction, and we went out, and we hired a consultant to go and look at all of our revenue needs, look at our current fee structure that we have, and look at if there's any adjustments or anything that needs to be done. So we had the water study done. It's also called the cost of service study, where everything, where we have to use constitutional law, Prop 218 requirements, industry standards and everything in developing this. And we came to you first time back in October. I'd like to click that, or you're my button pusher here. And it's an overview of came through, but for the prior presentations, in October, we came and we showed you all of our projected revenue needs. We talked about what type of, if we use the current metered fee structure of ten percent fixed and ninety percent variable, we have a pretty good sized deficit. And that's regardless if we have a drought, water conservation, or we have floodgates opening. We're going to have a deficit based on that, because eighty-five percent or eighty-four percent of our fee structure is right now fixed. Then we looked at what are the ONM reserve guidelines, a couple of policy issues that we came to you, and we also provided you several scenarios. When you look at thirty, seventy, forty-six, or fifty-fifty, the first number is the fixed component, the second number is the variable. So at thirty, seventy, it would be a thirty percent fixed charge that the city would get, have their revenues come in for, seventy percent on the variable. The lower the fixed, the higher ramifications for drought or water conservation or anything. The higher the fix, the less that impacts the city revenues. After discussing everything, and one of the key pushing here, or push here was, we're going to be revenue neutral. We're not looking to add more revenue. We're just looking to set the rates equitably to meet our current needs on revenue. So we were directed to go and look at a sixty, forty, and we did that, and we came back a couple of weeks later. We presented that to you at that time, we had, there was a lot of discussion on it, and the council directed us to go back, you know, to present a sixty, forty alternative. And so we did our draft notice, you on November seventeenth, you approved it to go out. And after, you know, after this had happened, as Mr. Winkler indicated, we've done a few things. We did a public notification at the hearing today, it was going to be set today. We said all the criteria that was based in that flyer, and it went out to almost seventy-six hundred property owners throughout the city. And we also did comparative billing, and we've had some response, light response back from customers. And that was comparative billing for a summer month, based on our current proposal here versus the existing rate structure. Now, one of the things that we didn't do on this comparative billing is look at people who had been metered all along. We just did it for people who had not had meters, because people who've been metered all along, they already know what their meter size is, they can see that on their bill, they can see what the numbers are from our rate study, and they can calculate out what their bill would be, because they have, you know, they have several, they've had years of billing information there. So it was kind of just for the people who'd never had meters before, it was kind of new to them to see this variable billing and fixed billing change, because they're just used to a flat twenty-plus dollars per fee. So we're going to talk, the next couple of minutes, we're going to talk about the report itself. I'm going to have Raftelis, a consultant, come up. Habib Isaac, he's been here before, and he's going to go through a few of these slides, just to tell you really quick about what happened in the meat of it and all the numbers. You're going to get all kinds of numbers being chronic statute, but I told him to keep it down a little bit, because there's a lot of stuff that we've already went through, but there's a lot, there's people here in the audience that hadn't heard some of this before. It's nice to, just to refresh everybody's memory when we're here. So Habib's going to come up right now.
I have to just stand to say that the current meter testing is not received as example to all the standards that are ready to be used, or that they're going to be by them in current rate, but after we have a high rate factor.
Correct. On our first mock billing, we didn't include anybody who had meters prior to our new meter installation.
Maybe I could add to that, that that's being done as part of the meter transition plan, take flat-rate customers to metered rates, and so wisely or unwisely, we limited the outreach on what a mock billing setup would look like. Again, as Mark pointed out, people who are already receiving a metered rate have a pretty good idea how much water they're using, and it's pretty simple math to apply the new rate to that.
But people don't do that, right? They don't do that. And under the new rate structure, those individuals will be getting an increase. I mean, their rate is increased. I mean, that is the one group whose rate is increasing, because we did figure out with the rate study that means that flat-rate customers had really been subsidizing metered rate customers with the rate structure that we had previously, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And in our rate notice, it went out to all customers, we did have a graphic that showed how they would be impacted by the new rates, and showed that that was the one group that would be receiving sort of an across-the-board increase.
They did get notices.
There's a graphic, well, they understood it, I don't know that there were no mock bills.
Okay, thank you.
And we'll be seeing that graphic again tonight.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Cruz, council members, staff, as well as members of the public. My name is Habib Isaac with Raftelis, and I assisted the city with moving forward with this cost of service study. I may be reemphasizing some of the items that Mark mentioned, but also going to kind of keep it conceptual and talk about some of our findings, and then what were the results of those findings and direction from council as well as staff. First, I'll start with Prop 218, and what are some of the items related to Prop 218 as part of our constitution, state constitution of how you determine utility rates. So with Prop 218, there's five main components. The first one is an agency cannot collect revenue beyond what is necessary to provide the service. So from that instance, what you want to make sure you do is that when you allocate costs, you allocate costs based on the demand that your customers put on the system. And one way by doing that is by defining customer classes that use water in a similar mean to then determine how much demand each customer class has on the system, or how much of an obligation do they have to your assets. Also, another component is revenue derived by the charge and not by the use for any other purpose. And from that standpoint, you do have separate enterprise funds for your utilities, and that helps you be able to not commingle those revenues that come in. So from that standpoint, you're abiding by it. There's some agencies where they may still have water and sewer still combined, but in your instance, you're looking good there. The amount of the fee may not feed the proportional cost of service for the parcel. This is probably the biggest component right here of, where there's additional scrutiny on rates in recent times from attorneys as well as just your overall constituency. So how do you show proportionality? There's a recent preparo case where it showed, it indicated that you could show proportionality to parcel by first showing proportionality to customer classes. So by virtue of showing that you are distinctly allocating costs to your customer classes, by the fact that you are a parcel within that customer class or account, you're only going to be recovering the costs associated with your customer class. And therefore, you're not subsidizing another customer class or vice versa. You're only responsible for the demand that the customer class you're associated with that's on the system. Also, the next one is no charge may be imposed for the service unless that service is actually used or immediately available to the owner of property. You notice that it's emphasized and underlined immediately available. So the most important thing about a water utility is the fact that you have to provide available water, safe and clean water, and have it available to your customers twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. There's a lot that goes on with your infrastructure to be able to provide that service. You're not in the business of selling water, you're in the business of delivering water. And when you have to deliver water, you have a substantial amount of infrastructure needs to be able to provide that service to your customers. So it's very important to understand that, and that you have a substantial amount of fixed costs to provide that service. And then the last component is a written notice must be sent out at least forty-five days before the public hearing. Today is public hearing, and notices were sent out at least forty-five days prior to today.
Those notices went to all property owners?
That's correct. It went to all property owners.
Also went to all customers of recreational, which could be tenants, so we mailed to both. And one or the other made protest.
And that, from that standpoint, you did more, far beyond what is necessary. You could just send it to just the parcels, but most agencies, such as the city, sends it to both databases. The first thing I can do is go to the financial plan, again, just hitting the main talking point. The first thing that we always do, we always look at your current financials. How healthy is your utility today? Are you financially sound? Are you meeting your policy objectives? Are you meeting your reserves, things of that sort? One thing that I want to point out is that you primarily have all your revenue coming from flat-rate customers, which means your customers are charged just a flat rate monthly, and that's how you recover your revenue. There's no revenue adjustments assumed in this scenario when we look at your financials. And the only thing that is included is what you have on the books of a CPI index, which is running around one point nine percent. You would have positive cash flow all the way through two thousand seventeen, eighteen. And again, this is based on your current billing of it being fixed revenue of eighty-four percent. But then once you hit eighteen, nineteen, then you can't sustain that with the amount of revenue that's coming in. The revenue's just staying static, you know, costs continue to go up, but then you also have some projects coming online. You have an arsenic project where you're going to have to incur debt to be able to fund it, and that debt's around four million dollars that then will get amortized. You also have the elimination of meter conversion installation fees. Those fees right now were for customers that didn't want to pay a lump sum upfront and then wanted to spread that cost over a few years. That revenue is coming in, and over three years, it's then going to fall off and not going to be additional revenue stream that's coming in anymore. So those are the two main components. Also, for now, reserves would be making up that difference. Obviously, just like as you're, you know, doing improvements on your house, you can't live on reserves forever. You need to be able to have revenue coming in. So there is anticipated need for revenue adjustments in future years, and actually, one of our proposals as your consultant is we solve it, and we want to make sure that you're whole for more of a long-term outlook as opposed to a short-term. But we recommended three percent revenue adjustments for the next five years. And in doing so, you would be able to have just level adjustments that are reasonable, and then be able to fund that arsenic project as well. One thing to keep in mind is that policy direction was that we will table that, and for now, because of all the changes in terms of the meter conversion, let's just see, let's just fix the rates based on everyone being metered, and then we'll tackle that, the revenue adjustments at a later date, once we have a good understanding of what the usage and the revenue's going to be once everybody's metered. This was the policy direction. Revenue neutral. Again, the only thing that's included is a CPI index, which you always had on the books. Update the cost of service. It's always... It's always recommended that you update cost of service anywhere from five to 10 years, and it's actually required no, no, at least once every 10 years if you provide service to a school district. There was a case where a school district wanted it updated, it was upheld, so now part of the amendments in the government code is if you service school, at the minimum, you have to do a cost of service study once every 10 years. And then also recalibrate meter rates to ensure that the rates that are going to come from, from everyone being metered is going to be equivalent to the amount of revenue you collect today. Now I'll go into that a little bit more. So part of this financial plan assumptions, as I mentioned, the CPI index is equal to 1.9%. We also assume a little bit of growth coming online, as you just had another public hearing related to new development coming online. We were still conservative with it just being 1%. Anything more than that I'll be a little concerned with is then you're relying on that development to occur to meet your revenue requirements. And we want to make sure that the district, the city is whole with or without it. Also, we assume the arsenic project will be financed at $4 million. That'll be an internal loan at the Water Enterprise that has to pay back. And then also, operating reserves and capital reserves are met. We have an operating reserve set at 90 days of your operating expense and then a capital reserve at one year's worth of capital. And the purpose for that, one, operating to have liquid cash on hand, and for the capital side, to ensure that you have revenue on hand or funds on hand to then award contracts and keep projects moving and not have to wait for money to come in. And then recalibrating meter rates. So the current meter rates, they don't generate enough revenue once all meter, all customers are converted to meters. So one thing to point out is your current rates on books were developed almost 10 years ago. And it was a very small subset of customers that were metered, and it is no reason to look at it from year to year of how much would metered revenue, how much metered revenue would we collect if everybody was metered? Because almost your entire customer base was still being charged flat rates. Now, we're at the point where you're having that conversion, we have to look at that. So one of the things we did first was look at, if everyone's metered, what's going to happen to, to your rates? Your current flat rates right now is single families $20, multifamily's $21, and mobile home is $21 per dwelling unit. Your metered customers, they have a base charge of essentially $3 for one inch or less, and then the commodity charge of $1.22 per unit of water or per hundred cubic feet. Again, non-metered accounts, all your flat customers, the way they're being billed represents 84% of your total revenue. Your revenue requirement is around $3 million. 84% of that is coming from flat rates, which is stable, predictable revenue that you know is coming in every month besides a little bit of delinquency. The one thing we did was, one, we looked at your current billing, and again, that's the 8416. We then looked at what if everybody was, was being charged the meter rate that's on the books? And when we did that, we found that the amount of fixed revenue that comes in, like, again, stable, predictable revenue that you know will come in, that's a fat fixed charge, it's only 10% of that $3 million. And then 90% is based on the usage of your customers, which means if customers drastically change their usage patterns, which we actually don't really know what the use pattern will be of all your 7,000 customers that are not metered or 6,500, it could be, there could be some substantial fluctuation. And then that's a lot of volatility that the city would have to absorb through, through reserves, which you don't have that substantial amount of reserves to be able to combat that. But when we look at it, we, not only is there an issue about how much is coming from the, how much is fixed, how much is variable, there's also an issue with just applying the rates, we find that you actually generate less revenue in totality compared to the way the revenue's coming in today. You would be short $325,000, but thus not doing anything related to cost of service update. So that's very important. So basically, what that tells us is that the current meter rate that I've been on books for 10 years, it needs to be recalibrated to account for what is the amount of usage that you see. So then, we're not looking at, at doing revenue adjustments, but we are looking at increasing the meter rate to generate the same amount of revenue that you collect today. So there's a little bit of difference there. And then another thing that was discussed was the revenue split. How much fixed revenue should come in, again, stable predictable revenue, and how much should be based on the usage of your customers or the, the variable rates? So again, right now, based on your billing, 84% of your revenue is stable, predictable. And the direction we got from council was, let's have it at 60%. Or in totality, you're going to reduce it down, which then still gives customers that are very efficient with their water use, the ability to reduce their bill if they're, if they're very efficient. So you're rewarding those that are conserving. Not talking about the fixed variable charges themselves. But with that 60% that's coming from your fixed charges, it's made up of two components. The first one is, we looked at costs associated with customer service and billing. With customer service and billing, basically, the amount of water you use or the size of your meter is, is pretty much irrelevant. Any, anybody gets a bill that has an account, and everyone has the ability to pick up the phone and call customer service, get help, and ask questions. So from that standpoint, this charge is spread over all accounts. So you think of it as a base fee. So every single account or every single meter gets charged $6.38 a month. Then, another component related to fixed charge are costs that are related to capital, maintaining the system. And from that standpoint, the size of the meter is a better proxy to use to spread the costs between your customers. Again, your system was sized and constructed to accommodate peak demand plus fire flow during your peak hour. And if, and customers use water differently, have different water needs, and that's why they have different sized meters. And you're accommodating that potential demand that will come from those meters, therefore spreading costs related to capital and maintenance, it makes more sense to spread it based on the size of the meter than on, on a per-account basis to make it fair and equitable. And what we use is AWA, American Water Works Association capacity ratios, and that's based on the amount of gallons per minute that could flow through the size of the water meter in comparison to one another. So with the one inch and less being the baseline, it gets to sign one, multipliers of the factors that you see under the ratios is the amount of water that could, the amount of water that could flow through the bigger sized meters in relation to the one-inch meter. Then, as giving the one-inch as an example, you take the $6.38 plus the $12.60 to get your 1898. And then you go through that with every single size meter. Again, these are going to go up because you're increasing the percent coming from your fixed charges as a whole. Remember, your meter charge right now, only 10% was coming from your fix, and now you're making it 60%, okay? And here are the fixed charges for the planning period of 2016, which is this current fiscal year through 2017, 18. You'll see that, again, we have the 1898, and we have the corresponding rates for the bigger sized meters. And then we show the rates for the subsequent years, and we have footnote that basically is just the CPI index of 1.9%. That's the only difference between the rates in the future years. Then what we do is we look at your variable rates. So that's, now we're looking at the 40% that's coming based on usage. With that, you'll find that residential, non-residential, they essentially use water in peak around the same, they don't really have much of a difference. So everyone gets charged a base rate of .35 per unit of water. And then there is peaking costs associated with how different customer classes use water, how they peak on the system. And it looks, from our analysis, it really just looked like there was a requirement to have a differential between residential, non-residential, and your irrigation accounts. However, when we looked at the analysis and the usage characteristics, non-residential, residential is essentially the same, and just irrigation has a higher peak. So that's the only difference between the rates, was the fact that irrigation has more of a peak during the, peak during the summertime, and then therefore, they should pay a little bit more based on that peak use. So now, you'll see that the rates are 87 cents for residential, non-residential, and $1.03. Keep in mind, your current meter rates are, for variable, is $1.22. The reason why it's going down to 87 cents is because you're not collecting 90% of your revenue from the variable. You're shifting some, a lot of that cost to be recovered through the fixed charge, which then by virtue means your variable rate needs to come down. But in totality, we set the rates at appropriate amounts that recovers the same amount of revenue as the way your billing is today. If we didn't, let me give you another example. If we didn't change the revenue split and kept it 10% fixed and 90% variable, that $1.22 should increase to around $1.44, just to recover that deficit of the $325,000. But by the fact that we're also changing the amount from between fixed and variable, and we're also have to shift down the rate of the, of variable and increase the fix. And then the bottom graph shows you what the rates are for the future years. Again, the only difference is due to the CPI index that you've been doing with your current But now, I'm going to turn it back over to Mark, and he's going to go over some specific customer impacts of your constituency.
We saw this chart. This is for residential chart that we presented back. It's the 60, 40, 60% fixed, 40% variable. The green line right in that, that's going straight across is the fixed rate that we have right now of close to 75, little over 75% of our customers. And they're providing with that fixed rate, well over 80% of our fixed charges through that. They are subsidizing existing residential who are metered and existing commercial. They are absolutely subsidized. And that's, that's what we found when we did the rate study. So when you look at the meter size, you look at everything, as Mr. Isaac indicated, is that you look at how you allocate the cost of service, and so we did that. Looking at this, this is just for residential. So, so the 500 customers who have been metered for several years, customers right here, they're on this level, whether they're using eight, 13, or 25 cubic feet per month. And this is the level of subsidizing that has been happening at those, at those levels. Once they get over a certain amount, then they're, they're paying a little bit more than the flat rate customers. There's, there's been a lot of subsidizing for, for multiple years. What we can't show you here is the commercial because it's too variable. There's too many, there's, you know, about, most of the meters are three and four inch right in there, two and a half, three and four inch meters that are commercial. And their usage, you know, whether it's a hotel or it's a restaurant, just really varies. So we can't really show you how that line would be on this simple chart. We can show it on multiple charts and multiple spreadsheets and everything, and we can, you know, we can, we can develop that, but what you would still see is a subsidizing. So when you're sitting here, when we're looking at, at this, at this graph right here, the blue line is where our current, our proposed rates will be for residential. Residential is about 6,900 customers of the 7,200 or so that we have. And, and so this is where the new residential customers will, or the new rate will be on all residential customers. The, this chart that we had showed you previously compares with other cities in the area, other, other utilities in the area. The darker blue is what their fixed rate fees are, and the lighter blue is the variable. We are in this area right here. You can see for, for the, a given amount of 13 cubic feet of use of water per month, which is about 750 gallons a month, I mean, not 10,000 gallons, well over 10,000 gallons a month. This is what our rate will be for our residential customers. This is, these are the other entities. There's with SAC County in one district, they're a little bit lower on their fixed, and then, and then several are higher than the 60% on their fixed. So we're just looking at the comparables here, but then we thought about the same as, as commercial. You know, we thought, we thought about this several months ago when we were providing this. There are so many different variables between so many cities because they'll, they're going to charge different for, you know, they have different classes. We're only having one class, one class of, of non-residential. So you have residential, non-residential, and we have irrigation. Those are the only classes we have. A lot of cities will have 15 or 20 different classes. It's really hard to compare all of that because we haven't been, we haven't had meters for a long time. But in time, not that anybody wants to hear this, but in time, as reg, as we go on over the years, 10 or 20 years from now, we'll have more classes to make it more equitable as we get more information from those different classes, those various users. So as I alluded to earlier, and Mr. Isaac did too, whether we are in a drought or we are, have floodgates that are going to happen, we're going to have to come back in a couple of years because we don't know the patterns that are going to happen. We don't know how the, the 6,200, 6,500 customers are going to treat their, their metered rates because they, they've been flat rate for so long. And we don't know what's going to happen in, you know, in the future with, with whether it's additional water conservation, additional drought, or as I said, it could be floodgates opening. We'd still have to come back and, and review it and see what's happening with our customers. So just looking at our revenue stream right now, what's needed, that's all we've looked at because there's too much, there's too much unpredictable things over the next couple of years that'll be coming at us. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Winkler.
We're almost there. Couple of procedural things. To be valid, a protest must be in writing. We can receive oral comments for or against, but to register as a protest needs to be in writing. We do have forms tonight for anyone that wishes to file a protest that hasn't already done so, and you don't have to make it up. We actually have a form. You can just write in your name, the address for which you wish to protest, and sign that form indicating that you are a responsible party for that property. However, and we will, they must be received prior to the close of tonight's hearing unless the hearing should be continued open. However, we only will count one protest per parcel. In other words, the property owner and the tenant can't both protest and count as two. So only one protest is allowed per property, and again, we do have those forms available. Given our current number of parcels in the city, to constitute a, a legal majority protest, we would need to have 3,760 or more written protests that are deemed to be valid. That does not mean that the council could not consider a different rate variation, but if that majority is reached, then the council would be precluded from proceeding with our recommended rates under Prop 218. So at this point, we would recommend that you, certainly if council has any questions prior to opening the public hearing, we would entertain those, an attempt to answer those, but we would recommend at such a point as you're ready to do so, that you open the public hearing to receive oral comments, issue a final call before closing the hearing for any additional written protests. And I have staff in the front row, if somebody would like a protest form, that we'd be happy to, I see a couple of hands, so they'll come around and, and have a pen, and you're welcome to submit those while we're conducting the public comments. You can get those back to our staff and they'll bring those forward. Also, if any, you've heard, maybe you've already submitted a protest, and based on what you've heard, you say, well, you know what? I didn't understand that. I would like to withdraw my protest. I don't expect there'll be a floodgate of those. But we do have a form that if you've already given a written protest and wish to rescind that, we have a form that you can withdraw your, your formal protest. So that's sort of the housekeeping for tonight. And after council chooses to close, we'd recommend that you close the public hearing tonight. And absent a majority protest, we are recommending that you adopt the necessary rates. We understand this is difficult decisions, and there are winners and losers. Those who conserve might save money, some commercial property. Those who conserve might save money, some commercial properties might be more, but there are other commercial properties that actually will save money. We do have some data available, should the council desire that, that we can talk about further. But we're basically recommending that you do, absent a majority protest, approve the necessary rates. You know, that's never an easy decision to adjust rates, but it is a zero-sum game. If we don't adopt these rates, then we have to adopt some other variation and there will always be those who are winners or losers in any rate structure. We typically present the most reasonable, appropriate rate based on the sixty, forty guidance that we received previously from council. This is, was also part of the rate notice that went out and these are showing what the current rates are in the second to the right column and what the proposed rates will be, obviously after transition with three more mock buildings to go for most customers that are currently flat rate. We will be proposing that over the course of the year ahead, that we would phase out the flat rates altogether and that they would end up as metered rates across the city. So with that, I'm going to quit talking and turn it back to the mayor to see if there are any council questions or open the public hearing as you see.
Thank you. Questions?
Yeah, a couple of comments. I'm extremely disappointed that we didn't have any information for comparison purposes on the industrial and commercial. I had specifically called today, talked to the city manager in hopes that we could have some indication as to what other jurisdictions are charging in terms of water for commercial and residential. Not that that becomes a basis in charging those fees, but to get a comparison, where are we competitively in the, in the real estate market and in, in marketing the community? So I was very disappointed in that. Additionally, I was, I was disappointed that we didn't have any examples of what these costs are going to be for commercial and industrial, whether it's an increase or a decrease. And, and I know I had talked to the city manager about that as well. So I'm disappointed about the presentation tonight, as far as that goes. And I think lastly, I've heard it mentioned a couple of times where we're going to bring this back in two years. Council already took an action. This comes back in one year from the date that the mock bills went in in order so we can evaluate what the revenues would have otherwise been. So I want to make sure the staff understands that. I think the council's already taken an action on that. I don't think we want to push it out two years. So that's more of a statement at this point than, than a comment. We've seen the presentation. I understand it. Unfortunately, it was focused on just the residential component and not those that were already metered. And, and another thing that does bother me is that in all of the public meetings we've had on notification, it was always indicated without an exception that every, everyone would receive a mock bill. There was no disclaimer that we didn't include the metered. And I don't believe it was intentional, but I think it was an oversight that should have been avoided, that everybody should have gotten a mock bill so that they know, that they don't have to manually or, or otherwise calculate what that fee would be. So I'm disappointed on several fronts when it comes to this process. That's all.
Thank you. Can I come back to my point?
If you'd like, just a quick, we did receive some of those concerns earlier today. Our PowerPoint was pretty much already prepared at that point. We did prepare. We have a slide that we did go into that takes a quick look at sort of some, some comparative accounts in the city as to what, some snapshots of existing commercial customers under the current rates versus the proposed rates. You have to put that slide up if you'd like that before we open the public hearing.
I think that would be helpful, you know, it's information that the residents don't have or the businesses don't have, and I think it may be beneficial.
Okay. If, if that's council's pleasure. So this was just developed today and it looks at sort of a cross-section of a variety of customers. People's water use and what their water bills are is private information, sort of proprietary. So what we tried to do here is give you an idea of who the customers are without showing you their total bill. So what these are is, is select customers that sort of give a cross-section of the businesses in town. And what, we looked back, sort of a mock bill. We took two months in the spring of 2015 with real data, real world water usage and looked at under their, what would the difference be between their current bill they already paid and if we were applying the new rates? And as you can see, there's three or four at the top that are large water users. They will actually see a benefit for a monthly period in, based on usage in spring of 2015. And the next column is a similar two-month billing period in real world data from fall of 2015. And this would be the net difference between the current bill that they already paid and had we had these water rates in place as examples. And as you can see, some customers, depending on usage, large users likely will benefit because of the reduced quantity rate that's being proposed. Other users, because of their large meter sizes and standbys for fire sprinklers and other things, they don't use the water, but we have to have the capacity available to serve their sprinkler systems in the event of fire, serve the onsite fire hydrants at commercial properties to meet the fifteen hundred gallons a minute of fire flow. We have to size all of our infrastructure, as Habib alluded to earlier, to provide that water on demand. And so how do we recover that? Typically through this fixed monthly fee, it'll be going up. So lower water commercial users are likely to see an increase and this would be for a two-month billing period and two snapshot examples. So hopefully this gives at least some idea that depending on what class of water use you're in, how it might affect your bill. And other businesses can say, well, I'm probably kind of like McDonald's or whatever. And we've got a city park in there where we're going to be paying more. Walker Park only has three irrigated fields and some fairly water conserving drip irrigation around the landscape. If we were to have put up, say, a community park or one of the other larger, with large irrigated acreage, we'd actually probably see that we'll see a savings on those because of the, the lower irrigation rate.
Thank you. I appreciate the information.
Steve, do we have any comparable data with Elk Grove and Lodi from the non-industrial accounts?
Because of the timeframe in which we, we really entertained that request, problem with commercial rates is a lot of these communities that we compared to with flat rates, it's easy with a, excuse me, it's easy with a residential where you could, it's a one-inch meter and, and, and everybody's got that residential rate. When you get in commercial, there are tiered rates in some of these communities. We then have to look at different meter sizes and it gets a, like I say, it's almost better to look at a case-by-case rather than, there's no good way to put it up. But I can assure you that similar to our residential rates, that there, you're going to see a very similar comparator on their commercial rates and we are going to, I will assure you, we will be better than any of those other comparator cities on the commercial rates as well. That you pay more for the same amount of usage at a commercial-sized meter in those communities. And we can prove that, again, by taking some snapshots. We just did not have time to put that together for tonight. Thank you.
I feel confused. So the spring, so you did like a mock bill for if they had been charged the proposed rate for the spring of 2015, Cardinal Glass would have paid four hundred and twenty-five dollars less than what they're paying at current rates.
New rates would, for that two-month billing period in the spring of 2015, they'll actually be paying less for the same amount of usage under the new rates. That's.
Okay. And then someplace like Spons Cookies paying forty-eight, seventy-two more for spring and then in the fall would be five, four, sixty-two.
And clearly they were using more water in the fall and that was a favorable benefit to them.
Okay. Okay.
Do you have any good questions, council?
There will be an open forum. We should open it up.
We're definitely going to open the hearing. If you'd welcome.
I actually, I want to speak to Chief Tony Terry Parker.
Well, first, with respect to this, a lot of the commercial properties have an irrigation meter and a water meter. So is this including both irrigation meter and the water meter in this study?
I believe we did look at that on these comparators where they have multiple meters. Are those all included in these totals, John?
So you got both meters being charged at the extremely high rate that you're trying to move commercial properties to in this study?
Answer is yes. The comparator would be under our new proposed rates based on their existing meter sizes and upon a typical use for that period of time.
Okay. Because it just seems really odd. I mean, at one, you know, and one point that I want to bring up is that the consultant said that if everybody, if we raised rates so that we could afford the system, everybody would be paying a dollar forty-four per cubic, hundred cubic feet. But instead, we're lowering everybody to eighty-seven cents for cubic feet. So where's the difference being made up? And the difference is being made up by piling all these extra costs on commercial properties to the size of their meter. So you're actually giving a break to residential properties and lowering their rate, lowering their costs while you shove a huge amount of cost against commercial properties. And I don't think that's fair. I think that this should be rejected just on that fatality on its own. But, you know, this whole thing just seems completely unfair how they're going about this with these meter charges. And I don't agree with it and that's what I want to come and voice today.
Hi, my name is Terry Parker, 545 Industrial Drive here in Galt. Excuse my voice. In the interest of time, thank you for letting me speak, by the way. In the interest of time and repeating the same points, I'll be talking on behalf of the Galt District Chamber of Commerce and as an industrial property owner. A lot of the points kind of crossover. As a chamber, our role is to be a watchdog for our local businesses and an advocate for bringing new businesses to town. As a commercial industrial property owner, I owe my tenants who will be affected some representation. I will run through our concerns. The commercial industrial owners have, and just so you know, tonight I'm speaking regarding commercial and industrial, not residential, just to be clear. The commercial and industrial owners have not received any direct notification or did they get a sample utility bill like the residential homeowners did? It was assumed this was residential related only due to the push for residential meters. Commercial and industrial owners have been required to have meters for many years, so we thought our bills had already been modified at that time. I was told a, a notice was placed in the paper and posted on the website. The website was posted with residential and non-residential combined labeled as proposed water rates. Looking, you would not, you would assume residential since no publicity was ever made for commercial or industrial. This was dated in November twenty-seven, 2015. Shouldn't we have at least gotten a sixty-day notice, what was required, which you answered, forty-five days? So thank you for that. There also has been a study that, there has, there also has not been a study that we have, that we know of or that has been published that can find, that we can find examining the effects of a rate increase would have on industrial and commercial owners and the fees. I believe this was done for residential. Curious if one was done for industrial and commercial and I just didn't find it. I don't know. And I wanted to ask, has the council asked for this info so they can make an informed decision tonight? Industrial and commercial buildings are required to have an additional separate line for landscaping. This will add additional fees to the property owners too, so double the fixed connection fee. Some owners I know have talked to me, have said that they have a need for this line so they are being charged, I'm sorry, some owners I am told do not have a need for the second line. So they are being charged for something they are not using. So, and then I wanted to ask, and it kind of wasn't answered, but I'm still not totally clear why the landscaping use charge is more than the other charges. So I'm a little, still not clear on that. Did we, also I wanted to ask, did we do a study on how we compare to neighboring communities? And so this has not been published or posted on the website. As the council asked for this info, I think the city should take the time to educate the commercial and industrial consumers as they did, as they did the residential. Reading through everything, you would assume the rate increase only affects residential. We want to know if a study was done and if proper information was given to the council and property owners so they understand the reasoning and justification behind the increase. As it stands, it feels like this was done without much concern for the effect, for the people it will affect. Second, with the economy barely making a comeback and the cost of doing business already high, we believe increasing rates will just add to the difficulty of attracting new commercial and industrial businesses to our town. In addition, we have to keep in mind, many of our existing businesses weathered a harsh economy with the confidence that someday times would be better. They believed in our community and stuck it out. They are just now seeing a little bit, a little relief. The things they are getting is a nine hundred to a thousand percent rate increase. You don't have to look far to see the empty commercial and industrial buildings. Personally, I have been in the red with my building and will not be able to absorb the increase. Like most owners, I'll have to pass the increase to my tenants. I feel awful about this. I know they have families and they are barely making it at, as it is with their businesses. They had a dream and believed in our community to start that dream. Our businesses provide jobs and community service. And for instance, Kate Guerrero boxing, he has a huge number of kids in his classes. Many of these kids are high risk. He keeps his prices low and gives scholarships where he can.
Terry, you have to wrap it up, please.
Okay. I'm almost done. To keep, I'm talking for two different entities, so give me a thirty seconds. To keep these kids busy off the streets and away from the pressures to join the game. This will affect that. So I ask that people, that before you vote to approve this, that you ask yourself, do I know what the consequences are to increase, do you know what the consequences are to this increase to our businesses? Can we wait a couple of years to allow our businesses to heal from a challenging economy? Is there other options we have not considered? Have our businesses, businesses been properly notified and communicated with? Should we give more time to educate them so they understand the reasoning behind it? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Terry. All right.
My name is Dave Darkchuk. I live on Vans Court. Is it my understanding that these rates will affect all customers? Have all customers been notified and are we all on the same level of information? Because to my understanding, we're not. My neighbor directly across the street from me does not have the same information I have. He's unaware of this. He got a certain amount, but he didn't get the mock bills. His meters went in after mine did. I don't believe his meters were completed until October. Mine went in sometime during the summer. It seems as though the information is staggered out. And I don't believe any of this should take place until all customers are on the same level. How can we deal with this situation if we don't have the same information? Now, I could, I could be wrong. That's what I understand. Also, if I heard right, and again, these are questions. Gentlemen spoke earlier about they're not in the business of selling water, they're in the business of delivering it. How can that be? Delivery takes one time. There's a one time, you set up your pumps, you have your maintenance fee and that's it. We're in the business here of selling water today. Meters will be adjusted for economical purposes? So to my understanding, well, some may start off low. There can be a time when conserving water, you'll still end up paying more because your meters are going to have to be adjusted to the income that's needed, not to how much water you use. You go to a gas station, you pay whatever the cost is for that amount of gas. That's the way water should be. If there's an increase in the water, of course rates have to go up, but not just to keep, keep up with the economics of it. This is a need. Water is a need. Water's not a function, not a, water's something we want, it's something human beings need. I think everybody needs to be on board with this. Otherwise, you need to set this aside. This is not fair. Thank you.
You know, I think, maybe you might want to step back. I think you had some shallow voice and some aggravation about not getting across. And I think since this whole situation started with the meters, now with the rates, it's the same thing. It's like you can put three shells up here, put the B under one, figure it out. That's what it seems like. I don't think anybody should subsidize anything. And that's what the, what we've been doing is the flat rate. I got to let him, but I don't. And that's what the, what we've been doing is the flat rate. I got a letter, but I don't recall a mock bill. Regardless of that, really, to be honest with you, I don't think that is as important as what we're going forward with tonight. And, and it's, he wants you to approve this tonight. And I think you had enough legitimate questions to stop it for a minute, maybe bring it back in two or four weeks. Because I don't think the citizens have had ample time to really admit, because we got that letter forty-five days. Okay, but, you know, a lot of people from Galt take, take the kind of doing things. It's the way we are. But, that being said, if you're going to go forward tonight, I think you ought to take into consideration about the people that subsidize for how many years. You should weigh their service fees for at least the first two years of the program. I mean, give something back to people that, that help, you know, push everybody up or push this thing forward. But at, at any rate, it wouldn't, wouldn't hurt anybody's feelings if you were to table this for a couple of weeks and give it a little more thought and get some answers that you, that you will do it the way you ask. Because I don't think you got, thanks.
Gentlemen, good morning. Joe, can Mr. Darchuk, pop something up, and you fired up, too? I mean, we just put these meters in. We're already talking about. And we're going to come back in two years and revisit it again?
One year.
One year, you know? And I know this is all numbers, you know, and I know it's just how they fall in place. But, I mean, we're talking about, we're good at flat rate until two thousand eighteen, and then we start with money? I thought that's what you were saying. Well, anyway, is there, is there a scenario that makes it possible to keep it at a flat rate? With a gradual increase to meet the needs that are coming down the pipe? Look, and I've talked to a lot of people over the last month, and everybody's mock bill was sixty, seventy, eighty dollars. Mine was thirty. I'm kind of a jerk in my house now, since this whole thing came out. Hanging on the door. Get out of the shell. It just seems to me that, you've got to be a better way. And you've said that if enough people come together to stop this, you must have something in place that in case it goes away, that you'll be able to still pay the bills, right? No? I mean, why would you make this offer? That if we all came together, that you'd shell this if you can't find a way to pay for this? I don't know. It, it just, you know, I'm speaking for a lot of my friends, but I can't believe this place is in the past right now. You know, and, and like I said, I, I didn't understand half of that. Well, you know what? I, a lot of people do know about this.
That's the truth.
I blasted Facebook, and a lot of people told me about it. That nobody here is beyond me. Now, look, I'm just speaking my mind, you know, I know this is a city and it's got to pay its bills, you know, and I understand that kind of stuff. But, I, I'd just like to know, you know, is this something that we came up with as a city? Was this mandated by the state that we do the meters? I mean, how did that come about? It was by the state, we had to do this?
We, we had to. We didn't have to do it till down the road, but the, the city made the decision to proceed. And once you install the, the meters, you have to read them. So that's, that's, that's the predicament we're in today.
Okay, I'm sure you guys have been flooded with emails, right, about all this? Has anybody said that their mock bill went down?
No, it was, it was, it was your July, it was your July, August bill. So, so it was typically going to be your highest bill.
You, you cut our water down to two days. My neighbor, two people, elderly couple, freaked about their water and their bills and stuff like that. Thirty dollars. Where about? There's a lady who got kind of fed up with that whole zoning thing we were doing earlier, and she left. But she was telling me that she saves her, her water rates, waters her lawn with it, lathers up with the water off, turns it back on. She's doing everything, everything to bring her water usage down. And with the trees. I mean, what can we do? I mean, I was told at this, one of these council meetings, that people were going to have a lower bills. That there were some people that were going to get an advantage from this. I, I don't see it. Maybe, maybe these people with the high water use are going to see some kind of benefit, but we're not. You know, I mean, it is what it is. I mean, this is going down. I mean, because we are not going to get, that was not fair. We're not going to get three thousand people to stop this. But I just wanted to, you know, speak my mind, to at least say that I did, that I really wish we could do something about this.
I have a question regarding that four million dollar arsenic project. I would think it would be statewide, and the state would have to pay for that. Is that not true? Only for Galt. You can't get a subsidy from, from the state or the county, but you have to put the bill yourself. Or I should say, we have to put the bill? I, I disagree with that. I think that's wrong. Then all these businesses, that their prices are going to increase, that means our prices to go to that business is going to increase. Where are we supposed to get our money from? You're going to increase our bill, so where are we supposed to get that money? We're already budgeted, as far as we know. monthly, don't you budget your bills? You know exactly how much you have to spend, and now you're increasing it? Now where's, where's the money going to come from? We can't go pick it from a tree? We can't tell our employer, hey, I need a raise because my water bill went up, my food bill's going up. I can't go out and eat because it's going to cost me fifteen dollars more because of water increase. Can't go to Bond's Cookies because theirs is going to increase. I mean, you've really got to think about where are we, and yourselves, where are we going to get the money from? Because we're stuck? And I really think that four million dollars got to come from somewhere else. It can't come from us. We don't have it. I'm just saying.
I have one hundred and forty-seven.
Mr. Mayor and council members, you may have more questions and discussion. That would be at your discretion. Under the rules you adopted at your last meeting as to how to handle protests and, and how to receive protest, if you are clearly nowhere near a potential majority protest, you can waive the formality of validating whether there was one per parcel and whether they were an appropriate party and just accept all the protests as valid. Clearly, with the number reported, and that includes those that have been received by email and fax and, and hand, dropped off or mailed to us, we're well short of any kind of majority protest. So, we're really back into the council's discretionary report as to, do we proceed with the course that's been chartered? Or do you wish to see additional information?
I would, yeah. You know, there's not a lot we can do about the cost of paying our bill, paying our employees and everything. We don't make up those numbers. However, I, I would be willing to take a little more time to be sure that white businesses are given an opportunity to see the impact. And it's clear to me that some people do not, I did not realize, when I got my mock bill, that the number I saw on the bill was based on the amount of water we used in June. And comparing this back to the water I'm using now, it was horrible. So, on the box, my bill trouble, because then when you realize the usage is going to be different, you're going to have a feeling that it's not exactly, that your water bill is going to suck up. What they were trying, what we were trying to do was show you the worst case by looking at your summer bill. I don't know, do you know why there are people out there that don't understand? And I would like to see an opportunity, if you have a question, to have some time to submit it and try to get it met. I also did not realize, on my fault, that not, that everybody's got a bill that was calculated back on the first. So, I wanted to open my mouth. I had to see how this going to, spend a little more time on trying to understand what people's questions and notice that not this information that I got has a homeowner's difference.
Along those lines, how many parcels or residents or businesses have not received? Okay, all the businesses in commercial have not received the mock bill. How many residential, or any, are there any remaining?
Yes, a couple of misconceptions and, and a couple of accurate statements. We, as we shared with you in a, in a previous report, there is a staggered set of mock bills for those that were not installed by July. So we couldn't do a mock bill for July through August usage if the meter was not installed. So, yes, right across the street, there may be a situation where one neighbor got it on one side of the street because theirs were done. We have the whole Meadowview area that came in with a water line replacement project. So they would be in a second tier of mock buildings. We did send out with those sample bills, a timetable showing both sets. Those that had their meter in prior to July fifteenth, when, when they will receive their four sample bills. Their first live bill would not be until June of two thousand sixteen. Then there's a second group that would have received their meter after July fifteenth. And those, the first bill will not be going out until next month, their first mock bill. And then they would get their full four sets over eight months of, of monthly mock bills, or billing period mock bills, and they would not become effective until October of two thousand sixteen under the proposed transition schedule. No, we did not send the mock bills to people who already metered because the whole point was to educate those who had no idea how much water they're using, how much they were using. People with metered bills already, already have been receiving that in some cases for years. We did not focus our outreach on commercial. We figured they were a more sophisticated customer that could calculate fairly easily, based on their prior water bills, what the impact would be. We might have erred in that assumption. But typically, a, a business person can look at that and, and do that math fairly. It's not complicated math under a single-tier rate structure. So, they were, I heard it said, we didn't receive any notices. All of the commercial customers should have, that are commercial property owners or are currently paying a water bill should receive the exact same notice. But the residential customers, the exact same notice. And in there, it talks about residential, non-residential, irrigation or separately metered irrigation customers. Meter sizes up through eight-inch. I don't know, anybody could have not conceived that those were talking about commercial properties. I just, there are no residential properties that have eight-inch meters in town. In fact, there are no eight-inch commercial meters in town.
Well, if you were to ask my wife, how big of a meter we have in our front yard, she could say eight inches. So I think that's another assumption that we're, that we're making that, you know, just, just because you, you're an engineer. That's the way you think.
Fair enough, but their meter bills they've been receiving have their meter size right on. We may, again, strategically may have erred in not having done mock bills. I believe when we rolled out the transition plan, we endeavored to make it clear that it would only be going to those who were flat rate. Certainly, our Q and A sheet that went out to the flat rate customers made it clear that they were the ones receiving it. So again, if we erred in communicating well, we take responsibility for that. So, take those flashes.
If not everybody's received a mock bill, I'm for holding off because I just think that that's not fair. And I think that there should be something for the commercial people, to my personal opinion. Couple of weeks is not going to kill anybody. And I think that we need to look more into that. Or how, when are the next bills going to come out?
The next set of mock bills will be mailed shortly. It'll be the second sample bill for the original meter customers prior to July fifteenth. Middle of February, the first mock bill will go out to those who receive their meters later.
Well, the idea of the mock bill was to give people an opportunity to reduce their water usage. So, even, I mean, it was to inform you so that they could make changes to their habits, I mean, for the residential customers. So, we're not, so my understanding is that you're, so the people who haven't gotten mock bills yet are still going to have the same four billing cycles to change, change their water usage for.
Find leaks, figure out they need to change fixtures. Yeah, so they're going to get the full.
And I think the next, everybody will find the next mock bill will be not quite what this one was, because this was the summer month.
We would expect that most customers, the first sample bill for the ones that have already gone out, are going to be the peak usage for July and August. And that, assuming they have outdoor residential usage, that the, the next three bills will likely successively go down as we came into winter.
I am concerned with the residential and the non-residential. I guess in all of the, you know, the other three presentations we've had, I didn't, I assumed, maybe I was wrong, that all customers were rece, I mean, that's what I kept hearing, that all customers were going to receive mock billing. I never heard the differentiation between, between metered, currently metered and newly metered. Does that mean that, that's a concern, but I don't know if it, you know, it doesn't change the rate study. It doesn't change what we were trying to do. And by going with the sixty, forty, we were really trying to have the average bill for, for a current residential customer be.
Neutral.
Neutral. Because we don't, we're not trying to raise, we're not trying to have more revenue come in. We're not trying to even at this point fund the four million dollar arsenic project. We said, no, we're not going to include that in, in the current rate study. We know that we have to do that project. It's going to be, it's a requirement of the state that we get the arsenic out of the water. But, so for me, I don't know if it really changes anything that they didn't get it. I'm disappointed. I think that in going forward, that we should be sending mock bills to all of the customers, not just our currently, not just our current, just our newly metered, but that it goes out to all of the customers. So that at least they, at this point, could at least get three mock bills before we go into, before it goes into effect.
Well, I think the other thing, too, is that people aren't understanding is we're trying to save the city through us, but we'll pay for it one way or the other. Our three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar deficit, if you're not paying it for your water, it's going to come out of our general fund or somewhere else. So, because of the way some of the people have, you know, you have to change everything somewhere. And what, the big part is trying to save getting sucked three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars out every year out of our general fund or whatever fund that could go for our parks and, you know.
Well, and I was really, when we, the rate study came out, I was really concerned that our flat rate customers were subsidizing our metered rate customers, residential and non-residential. So our commercial rate customers were being subsidized by our residential customers. And that really wasn't equitable and shouldn't have been happening, but it had been happening for a very long time. So the rate study was, that was presented, and we have, this is our fourth public hearing regarding this. We had three public, prior public hearings where it was very clear that our current flat rate customers, which is over seventy-five percent of our customers, were subsidizing the other twenty-five percent by not charging them the rate in which they were actually using water. So I, I absolutely, I absolutely think we should move forward.
I have a question. Number one, this is step, is there a, any issues if we were to continue the hearing? I mean, if we continue it for one or two meetings?
If you continue the hearing open, then you can receive additional protests. That would be at your discretion if, you know, so you sort of unclose the hearing if that was your direction. If you strictly wanted some more information to be sent out, but if the hearing's closed, you know, does that really achieve what, what you're interested in? I would leave that to you.
Well, my question is, and I underst, I heard how the rates were determined on your, on all the, the various. your, on all the various meter sizes. But you look at the lion's share, and it's been discussed tonight, almost 6,900 of the meters are one inch because that's, that's for the residential. And you've got about 200 from one and a half to six inches. And I guess my question is, I never understood what the, I guess, either the methodology or if it's a proportionality in determining based on the capacity charge. I don't understand the difference, or unless it's a straight line mathematical issue, and I don't necessarily need to unders, want an answer right now because I'd like to spend some time to actually understand. Because I, because these are all assumptions that are made by the consultant, and maybe they're, you know, straight out of the AWWA handbook, I don't know. But if there are assumptions that are being made, then I think it's important to have an understanding of what those are if they ultimately have an effect on the, on the rate. So I'm not opposed to continuing the meeting for those reasons. I don't know what the other reasons would be. And I would like some information back on that if we do, in fact, continue.
Well, I thought also, assuming what we were going through all these meetings, that everybody was going to get a mock bill. I didn't realize that when they got put in later, they weren't going to get one. So what was the, how many people got mock bills already compared to like 100%? How many have gotten mock bills already out of these 6,000?
So we had about, how many?
Oh, so it was a small percentage.
We had fewer than 500 that are in this straggler group. So, you know, over 5,000 mock bills went out. But there's a small subset that were not completed by July and therefore could not go out with the first round.
Do those go also to the commercial industrial?
All of your commercial industrial have been metered historically over, I mean, over a decade. So again, we only send out the sample bills or the mock bills to flat rate customers.
So what you're talking about, those that are currently metered, can we get the extra jump when you're talking about the flat rate?
I jumped on.
They're paying, they're paying metered rates, but we've now had to increase 60%. So a lot of people, I think I someday get on that. The example, $126 per connection for commercial metering, correct?
Sorry about the flat rate portion of the bill?
Yes.
Or the fixed portion of the bill?
Sure.
Yes, our historic rates are not in any rational sense consistent with what are considered proportional best practices under Prop 218 or under American Waterworks, which are a national foundation that looks at standard approaches to how communities can best serve their customers in a rational method. And so these multipliers that you see on the AWWA capacity are basically how much water capacity you can move through incrementally larger meters. And then a portion of the bill that real, that through the study, and this is a 40-page study that we're teeing off of here tonight, looks at some detail at what are the costs incurred to operate the system, to build the system, to upgrade the system, to provide those capacities. And a lot of those larger meters are not using the water, but they have to have the availability in the event of a fire, for fire sprinklers or onsite hydrants, and the enhanced fire protection under the commercial code. So what was said earlier, I might take issue with how it was said, but as far as a long-term subsidy, what we're saying is those ratios have not been looked at in over a decade. And as part of the study and as part of Prop 218, we have to make sure that we're proportionally spreading our costs to customers based on the cost of serving those customers. And using that, that AWWA ratio is a standardized, accepted by the courts method of doing that.
My concern is that the idea of the mock bill, or so people could change their behavior, they could change, know how much water they were using, but it really had nothing to do with the rate study. And what this has to do is the rate study. And we seem to be basing now the rate study on the mock billing. And the mock billing really was just to give people an opportunity to change this, knowing that we have a rate study that, that we all agreed at the last meeting, that we went 60/40, saying that that was the rate study and that was going to be the rates going forward. The mock billing doesn't really change that. The mock billing was just to give people an opportunity to know that they could change their water usage by reducing their water usage, or change their bill by reducing it. So I guess I'm concerned about continuing the meeting. And when we've already had multiple meetings, we agreed that this was the rate that, you know, we didn't actually initially didn't agree with the consultant. We didn't take the consultant's recommendation. His recommendation was to go with a 40/60 instead of a 60/40. But we agreed that we wanted to have, be able to have people budget closer, so have a higher flat rate and a lower usage rate. And, you know, we, and we've installed the meters. We're under an obligation now to meter people, whether or not you agree or disagree with the decision that went forward with deciding to move the meters forward faster. Yes, we could have done it down the road. But now we're under an obligation to start metering people. And we just continue to not do the rates, to not accept the rates and move forward with it. And we just, you know, we have people, we have had gentlemen, you know, Mr. Walters stood up here, he wanted to move to his metered rate. The longer we prolong this by, then the longer we don't meter people who are asking to be paid meter rate. So I'm really not in favor of continuing the meeting. I think that we need to, we've come this far, we, this is our fourth meeting, we've moved ahead. And the mock billing doesn't really change what we, what was to accomplish, which is, it was educational.
Yeah. The 60/40 was to, like, we're not out, we're not making money. The 60/40 was just to cover our costs every year.
And the reason we wanted to come back a year from now was to make sure that the 60/40 is the right split for us. And is the rate the right thing? Or do we need to decrease the rate? I mean, because we didn't have historical knowledge to be able to say, yes, definitively this is the amount of water people use. If people are conserving water and our fixed costs go down, like, we don't have to upgrade the plant, we don't have to replace it, you know, we don't need another well, we don't need all those things, which people conserving water has reduced our costs in being able to deliver the cup, I mean, deliver the water. So I'm all, I think we absolutely, we need to look at it a year from now. And there's a very good chance a year from now, we'll have better historical knowledge to say, yes, we're charging the right amount, or no, we're not charging the right amount.
Well, there's too much, there's too much.
The whole point in bringing it back in the year, not, not for the purposes of increasing it, and I think maybe there's a misunderstanding.
No, hopefully that maybe we'd be able to decrease it.
Decrease it, correct.
Thinking additionally, what Captain Jure says, the very fact that we were trying to educate people about this, and none of the people really get the information, that was our goal, is why they didn't, we're not saying to change the rate, just to off. What we wanted to go down to be prepared, and if it generated questions for them to understand, more the better that they asked the question. So I think if our goal, by getting a mock bill, was to try to educate people as to what the cost was going to be, then we had an obligation to be sure that everybody got that education, we got a copy of the law.
Well, our goal to educate everybody was hopefully that people would show up at the last four meetings we had.
Well, as we said, I don't, we need to have an education.
I think looking forward to the patients, you know, yes, we come to this meeting to end of the year, we're also trying to represent the population. And I know it becomes another duty to try to give them a chance to understand and to be fair to everybody in the community. And some of the questions that were brought up, and I, we're not necessarily mine, but they were questions that the council had.
Okay, we need a motion for something.
That's the question. Jeffrey, Delia?
The, I understand, but we have to reopen the hearing, Delia?
No, you don't have to reopen the hearing. You can just move to continue the item.
Do you need a date certain?
Yes, I wouldn't have a date certain. And if you're going to continue it, I would recommend a couple meetings out because in reality, if you go one meeting, the staff report for that needs to be in in a week. And I think we'd benefit by having the additional time to put together some additional information.
And also be sure that all of the people get, including the commercial ones, get the information of the cost with the new rate. Now, we may have told commercial people that we have a new rate, but we didn't fill the next step, get a lot of cooperation, what that, what that. So I think the banking is kind of bad.
You know, I think about that.
Well, we would certainly look for some clarity as to what council's expectations were. If it's to do another set of not so much Prop 218, 45-day notices, but some additional information to our commercial customers, which are a subset of about 150 accounts, I believe, depending on what the account parks and churches and things. But we can certainly figure out who our non-residential customers are. And if it's your desire, we can do some more information if it's your desire to, you know, there was some frustration with, you know, rate comparisons, if you want that to be part of what goes out to the commercial customers, we're going to need time to develop that, that data and try to make it understandable for lots of different user classes in other cities.
You know, I don't know from my thoughts, that we can really, or you compare our commercial customers to the other cities, they have to rate, and so we try to, it worked back in the progress, I think we spent a lot of staff hours and a lot of staff time, but I think that we can do a mock bill for, so I think myself, not.
What would be the timeframe on that to do the mock bill?
We would probably hand generate those, which are going to take a fair amount of staff time to do, just because of the complexities of trying to do that in an automated fashion. It's been quite the task, and I'm sure Michelle Neely is shooting daggers at me right about now, to get to the mock bills that were produced through our, our third-party billing company and, and found them and coordinating all those meter readings. So it probably with, with, you know, less than several hundred, it might be easier for us just to go in and create a, you know, depends on whether we're talking a one-time or repetitive series. If you're, you know, a one-time snapshot, similar to the 10 or 12 that we showed you tonight, is not, that's probably work we could do on our engineering staff and probably takes a couple of weeks to put that together and then we can get that mailed out.
So would the March 1st meeting work or would be more time?
We have a motion. I understand. So I'd, I'd make a motion that we just, that we adopt the proposed water rate adjustment step forth in the public note that sends the customers and property owners.
Would you like an answer to the prior question? I believe that we could disseminate information to our commercial customers, certainly by March 1st. You know, how long do you want them to have it? When do you want to bring this back? You know, we could probably get something out in the next several weeks. So let's say by mid-February. And if that's enough time to give them a couple of weeks to digest, commercial customers to digest that, and if you want to continue the hearing to your first meeting in March, we would be open to that. And the only question is, are you going to leave the hearing open so that people can go out and generate, trump up more protests? I think they've had 45 days to consider that.
After, the meeting's open.
You've closed the hearing, so it's up to you whether you reopen it, is all I'm saying. Well.
I mean, I, I can say, so if we're going to, if we're going to push out the continuing to not adopt the rate, does that push out everything else also? Does it push out when we actually implement the meter rate?
We're currently proposing for them to become effective on March 1st. Is that date fixed in stone? That's what we propose. If you held a continued hearing on March 1st, you could still make them effective March 1st for the existing metered customers, with others to transition to that over the six months ahead that are currently flat rate. Could that be delayed? It certainly could. Am I answering your question?
Oh, yeah. I mean, because that's part of it. I mean, I think that's what we need to know. I mean, we're going to push it out, which means that we're going to continue to have the inequity going on that's going on now. So, I mean, you can't, we can't, if we're not, if we're not going to accept the proposed rate change, then it doesn't make sense to go ahead and implement it on March 1st. It goes, then it gets pushed out even further. And then a year from now, we won't have the data that we need, or we won't have, I mean, it just keeps delaying what, what has already been posed as being something that needs to be made forward.
People are, we were going to do it in the first place, and that was to let the new members, the customers, have an opportunity to know if the justice was going to have on. And we didn't do that. We may have given them an opportunity to fix it, to calculate it on their own, but not everyone got the same treatment.
Is there, is there a possibility tonight to carve out portions of the approval process? And what I'm thinking is, I think that, you know, a majority of the residential customers benefit from this, and there is no question about it from the new rate structure. And it stops a subsidy that's going on for at least 10 years that we're aware of. To that extent, you know, I would feel very comfortable in approving the residential side of this because most of the issues tonight have dealt with the non-residential, the commercial industrial, where some of the questions have come up. And if it is possible to carve those out in the approval process, that's what I would put forth as an alternate motion.
Is that all the residential people talking about?
I understand, I understand that.
But they're on flat rate, you can't do that anymore.
Yeah, I don't see how that works because the reality is, is if you're going to continue your discussion on the commercial accounts, and there's modifications that you make to those commercial accounts, there's a chance of impact on the, on the residential portions. And that would cause us to then go back and go through a modification process on those residential accounts after adoption. I think we're better, better served by continuing the entirety of the process and making sure that when we adopt, it's for all accounts and we're comfortable with the entire program.
Okay, that, my question wasn't whether it's not a good idea, it's whether can we do it? That's the question, can we do it? Is it the best decision? Maybe not, but can we do it?
Carve out just the residential?
Carve out just the residential. Well, he's saying it's not a good idea because it may have an effect on, if I heard you correctly, an effect on the residential, depending upon what you did with the non-residential. But I would, I would counter that, you know, for 10 years, we've been doing it wrong. I don't know that a month or two would make that much of a difference. So, I mean, I.
But I'm concerned for 10 years, we didn't know. And now we do know. And now we're continuing to ask the residential customers to subsidize a handful of, of commercial, I mean, we're talking at less than 200 or a little over 200, commercial non-residential customers?
Well, plus 900 residential, because they were on the meter, meter, the metered rate.
So we're asking 6,500 or 6,000 of the others to continue to subsidize this small handful of people. As a residential customer, I tell you, it was pretty shocking to me to find out that we were, that our rates were actually higher than they should have been if everybody else had been paying their share. We, it very much shows that for the last 10 years, we might have been supposedly paying less than we've been paying. And so to give conscience to say that we're going to continue that, to continue that inequity, I think's wrong. I'm not, you know, I'm one of those.
I think that was like, we're going to make a motion to continue this to March 1st.
Do you understand, if I understand the team on second?
Well, why are we continuing with the March 1st?
I make an amendment. If we're going to continue the thing to March 1st, then.
If you get all the people that did not get the mock bill, and then we're going to do the last one. This is how.
Then I think that we also.
We heard tonight that these guys made it.
Will they have it by March 1st? I'm sorry, but it's useless if the people won't have it by then.
Don't we also need, if we're going to delay the, if we're going to continue the public hearing in March 1st, then we need to delay the implementation? I mean, it becomes all part of that same, at that part. I mean, it's one thing to say, let's continue the public hearing. We also have a March 1st.
And we didn't do it. We said we were going to send the mock bill. And I thought we all knew what we do, which is that's my hearing, this is coming out every time. And I didn't find out how the other people in Meto, you think you did a copy, and why did the commercials get a mock bill?
Well, Meto, you couldn't have, because their pipes were all changed and stuff. You can't give them a mic.
You didn't, we said we wanted to give you a mock bill, you're, you know, ready now, we have a civil rights conference, and the law of the year, you just got to pass.
They would still get the mock bill. The difference is that it'll be after the rate is in effect. So they would still get the mock bill.
If they wouldn't have an opportunity to look at it.
You're right. You're right. You're right. You're right.
But we've already loaded on the present and tab to bill, it's going to be paid.
Vice Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Hewer?
No.
Councilmember Campion?
No.
Councilmember Powers?
No.
Mayor Cruz?
Aye. May I ask you a question? How do people, what do you do here?
I'd make a motion to approve the residential one-inch rate structure at this time and continue, I guess, the meeting to March 1st or whatever staff believes is necessary in order to get commercial, industrial, and the balance of whatever residential is out there, their mock bills.
So how can you, how can you approve this for other residential?
No, it would be, it would be all residential. All residential. It'd be all residential. The other thing I would like to see is if there are alternatives on the alternative methodologies and the capacity charges on your, you know, two or three inch and above, because that's the biggest, that's the biggest issue. It's the lowest number of users in the city, but it's the highest economic difference, you know, in terms of change. So, and I think that's a concern. And I don't know whether that's a possibility or not.
Actually, though, and looking at the study a lot, Carden Black is probably one of our biggest users, their rates dropped substantially under, under the new proposal, because they don't get charged as much per cubic, what is it, cubic feet or whatever, CCF. They don't get charged as much for CCF, so their rates drop.
Yeah, some went up, some went down. And I don't know why that.
The large users went down, even though the pipe fees went up, the base fee went up. I would second that.
So I have a clarification I request. So basically, you have a resolution before you that says to adopt proposed water rates as set forth in Exhibit A. So what you're proposing to do is to modify Exhibit A to strike everything except for the line item that is indicated by user residential per 100 cubic feet, 0.87 water usage charges, and then the one-inch or smaller meter charge. And everything else in that table is, is stricken.
Would be continued. Yeah, exactly.
And so then the current water rates for all of the other meter sizes fixed, and the, and the capacity, or the usage charges would be the current rates in effect.
Repeat that, repeat it.
So basically, what you're, what you're doing by striking everything except for those two line items in the chart, the water usage charges for residential, 0.87, and the one-inch or smaller meter, 18.98.
Right.
And then the current water meter rates for all your other meter sizes stay in effect as they, as they currently exist. So they will have a different water usage charge, they will have, those meters will have a different base monthly rate charge.
I just, it kind of, since we advertised this as a public hearing of all the rates, by now changing that, I mean, does that cause us a problem? I mean, I guess there is a little bit of concern on my part that it was advertised as a public hearing for all of it. Can we then change that, the line of the public hearing?
Well, you can always, you can always adopt less than what you have advertised.
Okay.
And, you know, my, my concern, I mean, this, this may be a, this may be a legal possibility, but, you know, I'm looking for some, council would, would be so inclined, I'm looking for a little bit more feedback on the, you know, what we might end up with in two or three months by essentially adding two, two rate structures, two metered rate structures in place, one for, one for the residential, one with commercial, each with the different base charges and capacity charges, and what, you know, I mean.
I, I don't think you'd accomplish anything other than fulfill what, what the community understood was what we would do, and that is provide mock bills. And that's really what it comes down to. That's all.
But, but I think the, the point is, is that if we, if we come back to adopt the commercial charges, and you do anything other than adopt the proposed rates for the commercial meters as, as set forth in this resolution, it will require you to revisit the residential rate charges that you are adopting tonight. And in order to restructure those residential charges, you'll have to go through a full re-noticing process on those residential rates that you adopt tonight.
And to move forward any part of it, you know, there's, are we going to leave the hearing open or closed? But you can't continue to take protests after you've adopted a portion of the rate. So just as a technicality, to do any part of it, you need to close the hearing, find that a majority protest doesn't exist, then if there was some machination that you can delay parts of it, as long as you don't do it before you announced you would do it and you don't charge anymore, there's probably a technical way to make that work from a practical standpoint with our billing system. Having multiple rates kicking in at different times, we would probably recommend that you make them all effective at the same point in time, if that means delaying for additional outreach, hearing open, hearing closed, that, I would do it all at a consistent date. And I believe our consultant has a technical point you'd like to make.
Well, I'm concerned that our notice of public hearing said that the rates were going to be effective March 1st. And obviously, if we leave it open on the, on the commercial rate or the non-residential rate, which is not going to be effective March 1st, and that's not really publicized as to be.
You, you, that would be the earliest you could do it, and these would be the maximum rates that you could adopt based on our 218 notes. You could direct that it not be effective until June. You could direct that, I don't want the escalators as a policy matter. You could direct that, that we want to lower everything by X percent. Now, knowing that if you do that, we're going to have future deficits. Those are all discretionary decisions within the policymaking realm of the city council. You just can't do it any higher than or any sooner than.
Okay.
Or in a different rate structure that would material affect the other rates. That would be sus, create a problem for us, I would suspect.
Because if we, so later, if we went to change the commercial rate, we've got to redo the whole thing.
If you, it's a zero-sum game on revenue neutrality. So if we're not going to charge this customer class, then we'd have to come up with a new Prop 218 compliant rationale.
Uh, compliance on 218.
Or run a deficit.
Yeah, our compliance on 218 says that we aren't charging these classic customers as in subsidizing other classes.
Illegal system.
Okay, go ahead.
This is a very interesting discussion. Just want to make a couple of points. First, if you're going to adopt a certain rate, and I want to also specify that, yes, the one-inch meter may most likely capture all residential, but meter, the fixed charge is independent of customer class. So you're saying the one-inch meter, we want to keep it at X dollars. So again, I'll repeat it again. The fixed charge has nothing to do with customer class. It's just based on size of the meter. It doesn't care if the meter is connected to residential or commercial or industrial or irrigation. All that matters is that it's an active account and what is the size of the meter. So I just want to make sure, when you're talking residential, what you're really talking is you're using the one-inch as a proxy that most likely all one-inch meters or less are residential. So I want to point that out. Secondly, if you decide to set, go forward with one of these rates and not the others, then our rate study isn't, isn't backing that up. Our rate study is determining the proportionality that then created and established all these rates. So if you go forward that, you're now not using our report as the basis for the rates you're, you're proposing. The other component was, Councilmember Campion mentioned, maybe we could do some adjustments to the fixed charge. One thing that you are able to do where you, if you still want to keep it 60/40, but want to mitigate the differentials between the meter sizes, essentially what you, what you could do is you could shift the cost being spread based on meter size, so some of that capital cost over as part of the base fee to every single meter. So essentially, at 1260, they see the one-inch as the baseline for capacity, would go down, and then the 638 across the board would go up. But the 60% revenue that's coming from your fixed charge will stay the same. Then again, that changes methodology, and then that triggers a re-noticing, because now, not just the increase, it's also if there's a change in the approach, then you have to, you have to notice that.
So you put us in this box now, and there's no way out.
Well, I'm the bummer, is you got to look at the numbers, too. I mean.
Before, before, we also, as you recall, we show scenarios of 30, 70, 40, 60, 50, 50. And some of these items were proposed, because it gives a different mixture of being a little bit more measured on how much those differentials change. And I also want to point out, you know, yeah, the term subsidy is being used quite a bit, but at the same time, you're also in a situation where, again, non-metered accounts. So you can't really project the amount of usage they're doing when they're non-metered. You don't really know. It's only now that they're becoming metered that you have the ability to gauge what is the usage and should it be recalibrated. So, you know, you're using the best information at that point, and when they're being non-metered, you're just going off a proxy that, you know, most people are using X units of water based on industry standards. And so I wouldn't say it was something that was inappropriately done, it's just now you have more data and more information to then guide you to update the rates than saying to subsidize.
And every month that we postpone this, there's another component, too, where the 325K will be adding a.
If, if you meter them, if you keep, if you postpone it, keep everyone billed the way they're being billed today, then that 325 doesn't exist right now.
See, all I'm wanting to do is let everybody know what the rate is and what the state is going to have. And we think we're not proposing that we change anything. I'm just saying, yes, as we're going to be, and we're going to do something, and I think we should do it. And that's just a matter of, I want a mock bill, and if you want to.
I just want to make sure you guys are clear of the rate standpoint, some of the discussion that's been going on, so you're, you have all the information.
Well, I think staff have done their due diligence. We sent out, I mean, at the city, we did it. We sent out the public hearing. We've advertised in the newspaper. We put it on the website. It was on social media. I mean, we really did try to outreach, and there was an opportunity here. I mean, if you're currently metered and you knew, oh, I used, you know, 50 CCF a month, and my rate used to be a dollar 22, and now it's going to be 87, and my, but this is, I mean, you're absolutely right. It could be figured for that, for that, that number of people. I, I have great concerns about when we start changing what was advertised in our public hearing, what we held a public hearing for, and so either we don't do any of it, and we continue it, and, but then we've got to go back and re-public notice this and re-get the information out there, because we've done all of that. We've sent out a notice. Now are we going to send out new notices saying that we've extended it? And then we made the opportunity for everyone to put forward their protest. And so did the chamber, actually. What?
I said, so did the chamber, actually. They sent out.
I think lots of people have. Everybody didn't get mock bills, but everybody got noticed at this meeting saying that there was a proposed water rate change. It went to all customers. But how you could know?
Just to clarify, we send it to customers of record. If they're a brand-new customer, after, you know, those things happen. People, renters move in, renters move out, property ownership changes, we go with the last effective property tax roll from the county. That's where we get our information, property ownership. So are there the potential that there are a select few in town, new renters or new property owners, that didn't get the notice? Absolutely. Prop 218 says you had used the property owners of record.
And we just put it in newspapers, and we just put it on social media, we put it on city's website, and this is the fourth meeting regarding it.
I agree.
Well, the, the mock bill was more interesting. I mean, that's all people could say. Well, that's up to the government and the board. No, no, nobody's saying no, that's not happening. I mean, we said we could do it.
I'll make another, I do have to add, make the motion again that we accept the resolution regarding the adoption of the proposed water rate.
Motion to adjourn regarding the second.
Second.
Vice Mayor Payne?
No.
Councilmember Hewer?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
I'm stuck. I'm going to say no.
Councilmember Powers?
Aye.
Mayor Cruz?
No.
Now, do you need a motion to continue this to March 1st?
If the purpose of the continuance is to get the mock bills out to the commercial, then I would recommend that you go to the second meeting in March. I think that is, you know, it has not been a seamless process, and I think to, you know, to give ourselves at least, at least a month to get, to get them out, probably towards the end of, towards the end of February, give the people that receive those bills a couple of weeks to take a look at them before you come to hearing. I think that, I think that the second meeting in March would be more appropriate, if that's the purpose of the continuance.
Okay, then I would like to make a motion to continue this to March 1st, so that everybody can get a mock bill, can get a mock bill. This is very nice. It's a marshal, they need more of them, in that way, they didn't get one, and that's what they have to do. Why, at any time, it doesn't matter. You just still have to stay what they need, but, you know, anyway, that's my motion, so we can do it. We have a mock bill, this is continued to March 16th. This is continuing to March fifteenth.
More so than probably vice mayor, any more?
Second.
Vice Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Hewer?
No.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Powers?
No.
Mayor Cruz?
Aye.
So for clarification, I heard to all customers that had not received a mock bill, so were wanting to do one set of mock bills, that would include the existing metered residential customers that did not get one as well. Try to make sure we get this right. And the commercials.
So I'd also like to provide staff direction that we do not start billing at the rate on March first, right? Because it's not, so because we didn't...
It hasn't been adopted.
You haven't adopted it.
So then at the next meeting, we need to come up with the date of what's going to be the proposed. So staff will bring that back to us when the proposed implementation date is.
Again, Mayor, councilmembers, this is an item that I already distributed to the, to the city council, but I wanted to put it on the agenda just to provide a little bit broader public dissemination of this information. So basically, back in November of two thousand and fifteen, the Delta Community College Board selected the Liberty Road site as a preferred location for the new Delta College Education Center, also known as the North County Campus. Since that time, there's been some effort by at least one of the board members of the district board to re-characterize that motion as not necessarily selecting the Liberty Road site, but as rejecting the alternate sites and to, to start a new RFP process for for site selection. The administrative staff of the District Community College have indicated that they are going to put that question before the full board for consideration at a future meeting. They had been, had not determined exactly when that meeting will occur. It was not on the agenda posted for this evening, and we will continue to monitor the future agendas so that we understand when that question is coming back before the district board. The second item of interest is that they indicate, the district board administrative staff indicated that they will be preparing a staff report, making recommendations to the board on the use of the remaining bond funds on the Liberty Road site. And that will also be a separate item coming back before the board, and we will certainly want to have presence at that meeting. So we will continue to monitor the agendas of the district board, keep the city council updated, and most likely at a future point, we may make a recommendation to modify the date of a city council meeting so that city council members and department heads can attend the district board meeting and provide our input. So I just wanted to share that information with you this evening.
This is what I really came for, other than the recycling thing, that I had so much fun tonight. You know, this is really something that really, it's irritating if they're doing this. This is a political move and, but I own a small business in Lodi, and I know the chamber's been behind it, been crying nonstop about, we were promised, we were promised. But Lori, you were on the planning commission, Kurt, you were working for the city when the Delta College Board came, the president came, and he was promising every community something, to get money for these bonds that he was pushing. And we were promising, we were promising exactly what we're getting. And I think we need to be more vocal and go to every single board meeting and say something at every board meeting, whether it's on the agenda or not. I'm going to start going to every meeting and I'm going to vocalize my displeasure with this, because I really think this person from Manteca is doing this on behalf of either the Lodi Chamber or the trustee from the Lodi area. And I just think there's, it's a dirty game that they're doing. This community needs Delta College. It absolutely, our kids have been so underserved in every aspect of education for I don't know how many years. I mean, I got involved with this because I met a kid, graduated from Liberty Ranch the first year. He came out and he had a NASA sweatshirt on. This kid was a straight A student. His counselor said, one of the nicest individuals she's ever worked with. Because of this kid's family situation, he couldn't get transportation to any school. He was stuck in golf. You know, Creedence Clearwater should have wrote it about us. But you know, the fact of the matter is, here's a kid that had so much, he just aspired to be something better. He had NASA on his shirt. And I just, you know, that just jumps out at you. You can't just ignore that. And that kid to this day is still in golf. Still a nice kid, but not really doing anything. And I don't want to see that in our community. We can get this college, it changes everything. I mean, I think it'd be a good fit for that senior development that we're going to build too. Oh, look at all the volunteer that yet. But I think we should really forecast and do something proactive and go with the commitment to Delta, what we're going to give them. You know, we've promised them a lot of things. We're like, you know, we're going to let them hook up to our, our utilities and whatnot. But let's put it in writing so they see that. And let's put a spot to this game that the chamber or somebody in the Lodi area is playing. Because it's that simple. There's no other reason for this to come back up for a vote. None. Somebody is doing somebody a favor. So let's just think, call it what it is. You know, let's get up there and start vocalizing at every meeting. We don't need to be on the agenda to get up and call them out on it and let them know how dirty it is. I mean, Kurt, like you said, I might yoke it up, but you know. But the bottom line is, this is about what we're going to do for golf. Look at, I lived in Lodi twenty years before I moved here. I have never lived in a community that does more for each other than golf, ever. Whether we get along or not, we still do for each other. I don't know why, but we do. But I'm blessed to live here and I'm blessed to have my family here, and I just want us to be proactive in this. I mean, let's start going to every meeting, whether we're on the agenda or not. Let them see us. Let them know that, you know what, there's going to be consequences for their selfish. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, this ordinance was introduced at the council meeting on December fifteenth. The changes made at that meeting were to maintain the limit on the number of cats as well as dogs to four per household. And that has been incorporated into the ordinance that's presented for your adoption this evening. Happy to answer any questions you have.
Motion for approval?
For approval, I think Councilmember Campion, that's a question thing? Anybody for discussion? Call for both.
Vice Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Hewer?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Powers?
Aye.
Mayor Cruz?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, councilmembers, this is bringing back for your new project, we're going to be brief tonight, some concepts of possible modification of the industrial fence that was put in as part of the quiet zone process. And we're hoping to get some guidance from you as to some preferred alternatives and that the director, Ron, will make a presentation.
Good evening. Basically, with the quiet zone, we installed a fence to prevent pedestrians from crossing the railroad tracks. The fence is a little bit south of Bay Street to F Street, adjacent to the railroad right of way. Once we installed the fence, we had received a significant number of comments about the need to beautify the fence. Thus, this very brief presentation. So there's a picture, a couple pictures of what the fence actually looks like. What we did is we went back to the design consultant and had them come up with a couple different options. So there is the option of doing vine planting along the fence, or there is the option of doing sheet metal. The sheet metal can either be in like a railroad tree theme, a riverbed theme, migratory birds, some basically abstract flora, or Native Americans. So these are the options that are in front of you tonight. Basically, the cost estimate if we did vine planting the entire length is approximately fifty-two thousand five hundred. The sheet metal ranges from sixty-three thousand to a hundred and five thousand. The difference in the range is it depends upon how much sheet metal is actually on there. There is a hybrid option that of fifty-four, five, fifty-four thousand five hundred to sixty-two thousand five hundred dollars. And what that would be, would be the first hundred feet from each of the street crossings would actually be sheet metal and the rest of it would be vine planting. Before we go on to ask you what your recommendation is, just briefly, the design for this project was provided through SHRA, which is Sacramento Housing Redevelopment Agency, and it's the Community Development Block Grant. They have agreed to, even though this area is not in the low census mod tract, they had agreed to move forward with the design, funding the design and environmental, though with this project, on a bigger project with the park and the parking lots, we have talked to them if they would continue funding the construction of it because approximately six hundred thousand dollars of the design and construction of the bigger project is funded through CDBG funds. In talking with them, they said originally, the project was funded because it was part of a low census track, uh, track, uh, low census track, I guess.
Or the modernization.
And so basically, they said it's a continuation of a previous project that was previously approved, and we also provided a justification of it's immediately adjacent to and the benefit of the park, et cetera. So we feel strongly at this point in time that SHRA will continue funding the construction of the project as we move forward. So I just wanted to put that in, that it's not a done deal until the papers are signed. And, oh, there we go. And we're actually looking for council direction for treatment type, basically the vine planting, the sheet metal, or a hybrid. And if you're actually suggesting any sheet metal, what type of sheet metal? What, what is, whether you want the migratory birds, the trains, the riverbed, theme, et cetera.
Or some of each.
So with that, I'm opening up to council's recommendation.
Hybrid trains.
What can we mix it up with?
Hybrid with the trains.
How, how many, how many panels would you, would this include?
Okay, so the panels are about, okay, so the first fifty feet from the crossing are the four-foot high fence. And then once you go on to what we're talking about, so the first fifty feet would just be a four-foot, uh, four-foot fence, and then the remaining fifty feet would be the eight-foot high fence. The panels are about eight feet in length, and you have about twelve panels in total that you would have approximately six of the four-feet ones and six of the eight-foot ones on both sides of each of the street crossings. So this is on your eight-foot panel? It would be on the four-foot panels and the eight-foot panels. Because the four-foot panels are approximately, from where they start, they're approximately fifty feet. And then we do another fifty feet with the eight-foot panel. And we could go in some different dimension if you so prefer. We just took that as a suggestion. You're saying we start with, we go on four, so the end is eight? Correct.
And what you pick would need, for instance, as you look at the train motif slide, you might want to use the cars in the lower half and then put the larger locomotive on the higher part of the fence. Which way spacing could be, be oriented to which panel, or you could mix and match, or create some of the riverine theme on the low fence and add a different theme on the high fence.
But sometimes, you've got to have some, you can't have three. Well, absolutely, that's kind of what I was thinking, is to, I don't know, well, do you do a panel with a train? And then maybe a hundred feet of the vine and then another different, like maybe a bird panel? And we mix that? We can mix it up, though we are engineers and we do an interaction in regard to. So I just think it would be, it would be, I mean, it's a long stream.
So there are three street crossings where the panels will be broken at a low point and then go to a high fence for the duration of the intermediary. So if you like the idea of, you know, that all looks good, can we have a variety? At one crossing on one side, we could do X, and then at the next crossing or on the other side of the same intersection, we could actually mix in some, some of the oak leaf patterns and some of the crane patterns and bird, wildlife birds and trains. So it's, we're kind of open, if you give us some general direction, we can bring back a finished.
Well, I think it would be fun to represent different things in the community. I mean, whether it is, maybe just the Native American, I mean, instead of, instead of the Native American, I mean, so, you know, trains are in our history, the birds, I mean, the whole crane, and then maybe some, and there's some vines in between to break that up.
I'm not real wild about the color. Are these going to be metal or color? I would prefer just straight metal.
They're, actually, it's sheet metal, so it's...
Okay, so they're not going to be red birds? Well, you could have it powder coated in a color, or you could go with something similar to Twin Cities, which is more of a, a Cortan, Rusia, native. Either one is sort of graffiti resistant, so. Yeah, I don't want, I wouldn't want any color.
Just metal?
Just metal. That's just me.
So how, in the hybrid, how many panels are there and how many, how many panels?
Okay, so for approximately eight, excuse me, a hundred feet, there's approximately, I want to say approximately twelve panels.
Okay, so there'd be twelve panels and then flowers.
And, and half of the six of the panels would be the four-foot panels, and six of the panels would be the eight-foot panels. And keep in mind, so at A Street, it would just be south of A Street that the fence is located. At C Street, it would be both north and south of C Street. And then F Street, it would just be north of F Street because that's the extension of where the fence is actually located.
Whatever kind of vintage we look at, I'd really like it, if we looked at something at least drought resistant or water, or, you know, native or something to enhance it, not something that's going to require huge amount of maintenance and...
We would agree. We would want drought tolerant to the extent we can, but we do want something that'll cover the fence and not look dead in the winter, so.
Yeah.
Evergreen or drop their leaves or... Something that's not going to be subject to frost.
Just out of curiosity, when you speak of these panels, do you take into consideration maintenance, spoken graffiti? They look nice when they're new, but they look really bad when they get old and beat up. The vines, go a hundred percent vines, low maintenance, little upkeep, no graffiti, something to keep in mind.
The vines could die. Vines do die often, yeah.
And we've given some sort of pros and cons to both options there that, you know, go into a balanced decision. They've experimented with some vines over at the flea market, but they probably have something that'll make it through the summer as well as the winter, which is an evergreen. I don't know. On the fences. Yes. I don't know what it is, but it seems...
And then you have that really abnormal year where it kills everything regardless of the dust and ash.
I like the panels. I think they would add some, I mean, I mean, the fence...
They believe they add some sort of our kind.
Yeah. And it would look cool because of the round job.
No, I'll just recap what I think we heard is, we like the style of metal finish that is used at Twin Cities, the sort of the rusting patina that is somewhat, not as prone to graffiti problems, that doesn't mean you won't be susceptible to that, but it can be cleaned off. And that we would use a variety of these motifs at the various crossings, and that we do then do a combination of, you know, fifty feet each direction, or was it a hundred feet each? Hundred feet each direction with drought resistant and hopefully winter resistant plantings that would be in low maintenance, variety in between. That's what we need. Yes. Thank you.
Okay, then it's under one contract with, for God's time, I make a complaint.
Um, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers, this actually is related, uh, in a fashion to the previous water rate hearing item, in that, uh, we are recommending a, uh, a first and hopefully only contract amendment to RAP tell us. We've outlined in our staff report, uh, a number of things that went beyond their original scope. We did, um, push them hard to give us a very economical price coming in, and then we've gone to, from two planned hearings to support for four meetings with council, uh, and, uh, we're recommending a ten thousand dollar, um, contract amendment for work done and continuing to support the effort, and that includes the three thousand dollar contingency as we wade through some of these issues we've raised, uh, 'cause we've not yet reached the end of the process. Um, and, uh, we've outlined again, three supplemental things that they have performed in part, and they have more work to do, so recommend that we, uh, keep them on board to make sure we have a fully prop to eighteen compliant process through the end.
All right, questions for council? Does he have a vote on, uh, motion?
I'm just, uh.
Question for councilmember Hewer, her second. Second, you run stand-in, call for a vote.
Vice Mayor Payne, Councilmember Hewer.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Councilmember Powers.
Aye.
Mayor Cruz.
Aye. Okay, will chairman, can we call the council, and we can move to the successor agency?
Board member Payne.
Aye.
Board member Hewer.
Aye.
Board member Campion.
Here.
Board member Powers.
Here.
Board member Cruz.
Here.
We don't have any votes on it, so we'll move straight to the agenda. Do you have any questions, public members? No questions, please, sir.
Second.
Can I, so, to my board member Payne and to my board member Powers, call for a vote, please.
Board member Payne.
Aye.
Board member Hewer.
Aye.
Board member Campion.
Aye.
Board member Powers.
Aye.
Board member Cruz.
Aye, after this, five of. We will, we'll move to the successor agency, and we, oh, I'm sorry. We're gonna, part now, but I think that's, that's the obligation being scheduled for July twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen. Very well, you're up.
Good evening, Mayor, thank you, and, uh, members of the council, thank you for, I guess, members of the board, uh, thank you for your time tonight. Tonight I will go over the resolution of the successor agency adopting the recognized obligation payment schedule, or the ROPS, for the period July first, twenty sixteen through June thirtieth, twenty seventeen. Uh, as there has been some changes to the, the ROPS and the process, uh, tonight I have a presentation from our interim Deputy Finance Director, Michelle Neely, to go over those changes.
Good evening. We have for you the recognized obligation payment schedule for the period of July one, two thousand and sixteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand and seventeen. Um, because there have been some changes based on SB one oh seven and the Department of Finance, we wanted to bring these different things to your attention. First, the ROPS is for a full one-year period, where in the past, they've been for a six-month period. Um, next, as a result of the receipt, or our finding of completion, we are now able to begin repayment of loans between the city and the former redevelopment agency. Okay? Um, this item is listed on line thirty-nine, the two thousand, two thousand and eleven loan consolidation, and based on the requirement for the calculation set forth by SB one oh seven, this amount is just over two hundred and forty-two thousand dollars in each ROPS period. Again, because of the finding of completion, we are now able to access five percent, or approximately three hundred and forty thousand dollars of the two thousand and eleven bond funds as well, for projects which were part of the original bond issue. This is listed on line twenty-three of the ROPS. Also, on line forty-one, you'll see this, the city loan to the successor agency for the required DDR payment has been added to the ROPS. This one million nine to four thousand sixty-six dollars will be repaid to the city as we receive redevelopment property tax, um, trust fund money, sorry, I always get caught up on the RPTPS. Um, as they come in and they're received, um, we will continue to put any portion that's not received into the next ROPS period until we've received that money, those monies in full. Finally, over the next several months, staff will begin working on the last and final ROPS. Completion of this last and final ROPS will allow the successor agency to access an additional thirty-five percent of those two thousand and eleven bond proceeds. This concludes my report. We have an answer and questions. Um, staff does recommend that you go ahead and adopt the ROPS as presented so that we can forward it to the oversight board and to the Department of Finance and other required agencies.
Thank you. Any questions?
On the repayment to the city, any idea of estimate of years?
Are you speaking about the money? Dollars or? Yeah. You know, I'm really not sure. It depends on how much RPTPS is available, what other costs are in there.
Okay, so it can fluctuate.
Yes.
It'll, it'll be several years.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Anything, uh, closing comments or any questions?
So move.
Any questions, board member Campion, second. And the board member Hewer. Any further discussion? Call for a look.
Board member Payne.
Aye.
Board member Hewer.
Aye.
Board member Campion.
Aye.
Board member Powers.
Aye.
Board member Cruz.
Aye. Now, as we're, uh, the council, we're, we can, we can, we can, we can. Can you push it forward?
I have nothing tonight.
Who wants that?
I'm good. Same here.
Well, just to keep my string alive, just to give you a quick update on December twenty fifteen water usage, the city hit another fifteen-year low. Now that we're in the winter period, that's good, uh, and we did just hit a thirty-two percent, um, target and mandate under the state, so as we move into the winter, we, up to good.
Didn't, didn't they say there was a four percent decrease in the mandatory reductions?
There, the governor last month issued a new, uh, executive order directing, uh, that the Water Board adopt an extension if the drought continues past January, so stay tuned. Okay, that, the current rules are still in effect through February.
Okay.
I wonder, is there, is there, no, thank you.
No, thank you.
Yes, thank you. I have about a fifteen-minute presentation, but, uh, I think I'll defer that to the next meeting, thank you.
See? Okay, will you move on to the council?
Nothing, no.
That's the, that's the, that's the.
Yeah.
I'd like to invite the community out to join us at the Winter Bird Festival this weekend, and it should be a great event, and, uh, they do a great job, so, I'm looking forward to it. No. Oh my gosh, that's a first. I thought we had another fifteen, twenty minutes. Just kidding, just kidding. And, and I'd like to congratulate councilmember Payne. Oh, yeah, woman of the year. Person of the year. Very good, and a very nice. Yeah, that's great.